All right, I'm gonna call to order the County Council meeting on August 27th. First thing up is Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the visible liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call please.
Alder Radifrada is absent with excuse, Alder Barr. Alder Strassman.
Here.
Alder Clouter. Alder Crowsey. Alder Rice. Mayor Richardson.
Here.
Alder Schroeder.
Here.
Alder Scott. You have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Uh, next up is Spoke Appearances, Non-Engine Items, New Appointments, we have a couple of public hearings. The first public hearing I have is on Ordinance 2019-0-26, I'm going to open the public hearing at this time. I do not have any forms for this public hearing, so I want to make sure that anyone that wants to speak to this has a chance to speak to this. And seeing none, then I will close the public hearing for Ordinance 2019-0-26. Uh, we have another public hearing, I'm gonna open the public hearing for Ordinance 2019-0-29. I don't have any forms for this one either, so seeing no public comments, then I will close the public hearing on Ordinance 2019-0-29 then. All right, moving forward to consent agenda, is there a motion? For the consent. Is there a second?
A second.
Standing by Sarah, does anyone want to move anything on the consent agenda, Dorothy?
Yeah, I'd like to discuss, um, B1.
All right, so we can remove B1. All right, anything else that you want to remove, all right. Then, uh, all in favor of approving the consent agenda except for B1, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, and then, uh, B1, uh, I guess. If someone want to make a motion, then we'll discuss it. Okay, is there a second?
A second.
All right, and Dorothy, uh, questions on this?
No, it's referrals to commissions and committees, but there are no commissions or committees listed either on here or on the referral page.
Yeah, this is our, um, annual renewal with our, uh, insurance company, we don't have a, uh, committee that handles, um, this, so this is a, sort of a direct referral from staff.
Okay, it maybe would have been clearer to say something like that on it.
Okay, next time we'll make sure that, um, we do that, and it may not even be bad to take this to, uh, finance in the future.
Okay.
I see there's also a typo on this one, the word insurance is spelled wrong.
Okay, yep, that's correct.
Well, it's not correct, but, yeah.
It's correct, it's spelled.
Noted.
All right, great. All right, uh, all in favor of, uh, referring B1, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, and then there's also referred out, Administrator's Report.
Uh, for sake of time this evening, the majority of the items that I was gonna discuss are, are going to be occor- occurring after the, um, next council meeting, so I'm gonna defer comment till, uh, first meeting in September.
All right, sounds good. Uh, then we can go along to Plan Commission, and it looks like we lost Tom. All right, well, until Tom gets here, does someone want to make a motion for the first one for me?
Motion to approve Resolution R155-19, CSETJ slash 2306-19, a resolution approving request by John Dorfer for approval of a certified survey map to divide property associated with 6437 Grandview Road in the town of Verona.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, same with Dorothy, uh, I don't ha- think, is anyone here for this item? Seeing none, I can speak to this quick. Uh, so this is our, we have extraterritorial jurisdiction over the town of Verona, and this is in the town of Verona, and what they're doing is making a lot all around the buildings on their, on those acres that they have here. It's allowed in our ordinances, and it's just because of, it's in the town of Verona, we have the extraterritorial rights, is which why, which is why we're reviewing it. Plan Commission did approve this as well. Any questions at all? All right, seeing none, all in favor can say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, that one is approved. All right, Tom, since you're back, we did the first one without you, sorry, but if you want to move approval on the second one, that'd be great.
No problem, thanks Mayor, uh, number two you said?
Yep.
It's Resolution R156-19, Resolution approving request by, um, William for the approval of certified survey map to Lot 1, CSM 140 into two lots by the Plan Commission, and I move that.
All right, move to approve, is there a second?
Second.
All right, second by Ann, uh, do you want to, you want me to speak to it, you want to speak to it? All right, uh, so this is a lot where they have a house on it, it's a pretty big lot, and they're dividing it. There is gonna be, uh, it's on McGaw Road is where the second driveway is gonna be for this lot. It was approved in Plan Commission, it is allowed in our ordinances, there is, uh, uh, like a three seasons, um, patio on the house that is actually gonna be closer to the lot line than we would allow, but we're gonna be doing, uh, uh, variance, or, I guess that's not variance, but, uh, we're gonna, uh, in Plan Commission, we're gonna approve that as a condition, but it's, it's okay, it's there, it's not too bad anyway. Even though it's closer than we would really want to. Any other questions on this one at all? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, that one is approved. All right, number three, Tom?
Uh, this is Ordinance 2019-0-30, RZ 2309-19, approving request by Dan McCoy for BSH Companies Agent for NFSW to rezone Lot 1, CSM 15183 from Plan Development District, uh, general, um, general implementation plan, Zone District 2, Plan Development District, specific implementation plan, uh, Zone, uh, Zone District, and I move from plan.
All right, move approval, is there a second?
Second.
All right, is Dan here? I didn't see him. Uh, so this is vertical storage, they had come in here last year, and it was approved, but had gone over the year, they hadn't done anything for a year, so have to come back, get approval again, it was approved in Plan Commission. It's on the old Nedrobo site, if you're familiar with where that is, uh, Verona Road. And, uh, it's on, uh, it's a little more than half of that lot, uh, the other half is still in a cleanup stage right now for some of the contamination that was, uh, out there. But, other than that, is there questions about this project that I can answer maybe? All right, then seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, and that one is approved, number four.
Our four is our Ordinance 2019-0-25, an Ordinance amending Chapter 23, Smart Code Ordinance, to amend Section 565B, like boy, and create a section 565BI relative to building disposition in the Smart Code zoning district, and Plan moved it.
All right, so it's a move, and is there a second? Second by Ann, and you want, do you want me to speak to it?
I'm letting you do it, go ahead.
All right.
Go for it.
So, this here, if I remember right, on this one is, uh, so with Phoenix, they're building their headquarters soon, and in Smart Code, you're allowed to go 18 inches back from the building, and this is allowing them to go up to 36 inches. Whew, it's been a week, I remember though. Uh, so it's just saying that they can have a little bit more setback from the road on Smart Code, and generally we want things to be, uh, on the road itself, but the building that they are building, which will eventually even get longer, is a pretty big building, and so by allowing them to go a little bit deeper, it just enables them to have a little bit more of the, I guess, the visual of that building broken up. It only applies to them because this is a special district that we created for this project and for Phoenix, or I guess, not just this project, but for Phoenix itself. But it's really, it's saying that they can go up to 36 inches instead of 18 inches back, so just as you're looking at it, it provides a little depth. Questions at all? Dorothy?
I was just gonna say, I watched the presentation on, to the Plan Commission, and it's gonna be nice. That's all.
Great. All right, and all in favor of approving this ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, then that is approved, next up, Tom?
Six is, um...
Oh, number five actually. Oh, no, you're right, no five, we just did four, yeah.
Right, who's six?
We just did four.
We did four, we're on five.
We're on five now.
Ordinance 2019-0-26, Ordinance amending Chapter 24, Land Division, Ordinance to amend Section 24-8, be for a relative to street designi- designate, um, standards, to amend Section 24-8G3 and create Section 24-8G5D relative to minimum lot size and size for Plan Development District, and Plan approved.
All right, is that, are you motioning to approve as well? Did you move, uh, move to approve by Tom, okay, is there a second? All right, second in. And so this one is a lot, so in Smart Code, lots can get pretty small for houses. Uh, in the PDD, which is what this is related to, um, it's, it's allowing some smaller lots similar to what is in Smart Code right now. Uh, this is, came up with the, actually next, uh, well, some of the things that are coming up future, in the future here, uh, tonight, uh, the Verdean Development Crescent Crossing, they have some smaller lots there. Uh, so it's something that we've done in other parts of the city, but it's under the Smart Code instead of PDD, so it's just allowing some smaller lots in PDD as well. Did I miss anything at all? So, yeah, all right, uh, so if you have any questions on this at all? Yeah, Dorothy?
If we end up having discussion about it along the way, I brought maps that show the size of the Renaissance on the Park development, which is tenth of an acre lot sizes, and that's a neighborhood in my district, it's immediately south of the Boys and Girls Club, and it works nicely.
All right, other questions, comments at all? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, number six, Tom?
Number six is Ordinance 2019-0-17, Plan Commission Resolution PCR-02-19, Ordinance to adopt the 2019 Amendment to the Cop Plan, Amending Figure 4-10 Future Land Use Plan Map for, uh, for property associated with 2546 and 2556 South Fish Hatch Road in the City of Pittsburgh, Dane County, Wisconsin. Plan Commission Resolution, adopting recommission for the 2019 Amendment to the Cop Plan, amending Figure 4-10 Future Land Use Plan Map for property associated with 25, same address, 2546 and 2556 South Fish Hatch Road, City of Pittsburgh, Dane County, Wisconsin. Um, and I move, I move it.
Okay, let's move by Tom, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, second by Dorothy, uh, so what this, this is amending the Comprehensive Plan, I do have some people that'll have, will speak in a second here, but I just wanted to explain it for the public. Uh, so this is the property we've talked a lot about on Fish Hatch Road, the Coath property, if you will. A couple of apartment complexes have proposed for this that we've denied, and it, what was originally submitted is for this to be turned into low-density residential, it's currently high-density residential. What Plan Commission did was they said that they would be okay with low-density residential or industrial-commercial, and so they did amend that piece, uh, so that is something that, what Tom has, has at this point moved is the Plan Commission Resolution that adds industrial-commercial, if we want to move, change that, someone would need to remove that, and then, because it's not the same as Plan Commission, it'll end up going back to Plan Commission, uh, because this is, we ran into this last year, went back and forth a little bit, this is one of those things when we're changing the Comprehensive Plan zonings, um, we have to agree Plan Commission and Council for it to go forward. Uh, otherwise, if, we can just let it die, but I don't think anyone wants that either, so, um, I, with that, I do have some people that want to speak, so why don't we have the public speak first? I have Rita Hendricks first, and I think that's the only person I have to speak, but I have some people that have registered that I'll read next. So Rita, if you would like to come up and speak to this, that'd be great.
Good evening, I'm Rita Burkenricks, a Pittsburgh resident for 15 years. I'm here this evening asking you to deny the change the Plan Commission made to the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and approve the amendment as written by Alder Carpenter and sponsored by Alder's Bar, Schrader &amp; Rice. We want to thank those of you who have listened to our concerns. We were told over a year ago that the proper way to get this changed was to wait until April, ask three Alders to sponsor a Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and we did it properly. We ask you to approve the amendment as written by Alder Carpenter for many reasons. First, to keep dragging everyone back for projects that are not appropriate for this area is wrong. Almost everyone admits that the traffic is dangerous in this area, and it is unconscionable to make it more dangerous. Allowing industrial-commercial use will just drag everyone through the same torture again, it isn't fair to anyone. Second, there certainly have been issues about citizens being properly informed about changes in zoning, and Pittsburgh needs to do a better job of making sure that that process is transparent. This is one opportunity to do so. Third, even if an extremely great project comes forward that will benefit the city and not overly burden neighbors, all projects should be carefully studied, and residents should be given an opportunity to share their views. The people on Research, Park Drive, MICA, Noble deserve a chance to share their concerns about parking and traffic. Many condo owners are telling us that they're just now hearing about it, and that they are expressing major concerns. Property owners who don't want to give up back property rights shouldn't be called selfish. Apartment dwellers have shared that traffic is horrendous at certain times, and that there isn't adequate parking in the area. Having industrial-commercial zoning here without people getting a say is not fair and certainly not transparent. Fourth, Pittsburgh has looked at individual projects without examining the impact on the whole city for far too long. They've had the approach that concerns can be addressed later, saying eventually there'll be another road out the back, or that something is gonna be built, so we should just accept what's offered, isn't responsible planning. This is not the way to develop our beautiful city. We need to grow, but that growth has to take in everyone into consideration. That is what we're asking for, consideration. I realize that some feel we are unkind or trying to keep people out of Pittsburgh, this isn't true. We are passionate, we want to be safe, and we want a voice in our city, but we're also passionate about wanting Pittsburgh to be a good place for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know Jay had planned to be here and must have been held up, he has some things that, you know, can I give them to you?
Uh, yeah, if you want to handle it, sure. I also have Dale Hendricks registering in opposition of the matter, and comment, approve complaint amendment as written, I believe that's originally written. Uh, Dawn Strassman from Pittsburgh, registering opposition of the above matter, please approve as written by Alder Carpenter. I also have Gary Pedony from Pittsburgh, registering opposition of the above matter, and comment, the intent of the amendment is to return the land use to what it was in the Comprehensive Plan, please revise as written by Alder, Schrader, Rice, and Carpenter, this is where it should be, thank you. I also have Thomas Thorson from Pittsburgh, registering opposition of the above matter, restore wording of Carpenter, Schrader, Rice, CP amendment that was written in May of 2019. And Kim Thorson from Pittsburgh, registering opposition of the above matter. I also have Jay's... Comments as well, it's pretty long, um, I don't know if this is gonna be three minutes or not, but it's, a couple of highlights is, hello council members, Jay lives in Pittsburgh, I know, it doesn't say on here, but please revise the Comprehensive Plan Amendment introduced by Alder Carpenter on May 22nd, those modified that we have the Plan Commission on July 16th, and please delete the wording added by the Plan Commission that would allow industrial-commercial uses of this property, refer it back to the September 17th Plan Commission meeting, report back date to the Council's October 24th. And, um, some of the points are, that he has, is the proposal requires industrial-commercial classification in all likelihood, a proposal that requires industrial-commercial classification in all likelihood will create significant traffic issues on South Fish Hatch Road. Preventing traffic issues is the reason why this property should only be designated low-density residential. Even if a good project is proposed, it'll benefit the city and not unduly burden nearby neighbors. Residents should have an opportunity to share their views on it in the context of the process for amending the Comprehensive Plan. Process that led to the Comprehensive Plan being amended in 2014 to allow high-density residential, in 2017 to allow industrial-commercial uses, not comply with the notification requirement in state statutes, any list I was here. The notice of the public hearing at the council meetings, October 2014 and August 2017, did not identify the location of this property. This prevented many residents from attending the public hearings and voicing opposition to proposed amendments. Thus prevented the Council from being aware of those concerns before voting on these amendments. Best way to address this process flaw, flaw is to amend the Comprehensive Plan to remove the 2014 and 2017 amendments, reinstate low-density residential. This will demonstrate to residents that plenty of members of the Plan Commission are committed to assuring residents we give an adequate notice of the opportunity to voice concerns about a proposal that may affect them before any votes are taken. It will also demonstrate the majority of the Plan Commission agrees that its role is to offer recommendations to the Council on complaint amendments, but not block implementation of the Council's response to recommendation if it's not accepted. Thank you for considering these comments. All right, uh, questions, discussion by council members? Shan?
For many votes.
Recuse yourself?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right, further questions, comments, Sarah?
I guess I'll just say that, working with Dan Carpenter on this, um, we did really try to listen to the residents. Without a doubt, it's been a concern that traffic is very busy at that intersection, I know I take that road very frequently, and it's, there's just a lot of cars, it does feel unsafe at times, so I, I just want to stand by this and say that I think we made this amendment with the best entrance, interest of the residents at heart, and I, I agree with the residents that I wish we would keep it, um, the way it was written, that's just kind of as to how Dan had crafted and I had signed it, that's...
No?
If I could add to that, I think we've spent a considerable amount of time back and forth on this particular parcel, and one of the things that struck me is we have it, we had it zoned in such a way that we were going to continue to invite those kinds of organizations to respond, and we were gonna go through this cycle over and over and over again. And so when Dan approached me on this and we had a conversation around it, we realized that the greater mass in that area certainly has been supportive of the business, but this parcel for some reason struggles finding the right people based on the way that it was, um, currently zoned and currently set up. And so I agree, and fall back to our original recommendation on this, that it should go back to the low-density, I think is the neighbors have asked for, we haven't found a solution that is smarter than that, that is respectful of the space, and I want to see it restored to what we originally proposed.
Further comments? No? Dan?
Sure. Tom, you gonna, or you will?
I don't have anything to add right now.
Yo, okay, um, so I'll speak to this, I, I've been a little bit involved, so I had signed on after Dan Carpenter, Dan Carpenter resigned from the Council. It's no secret, I'm very close with Dan, um, and this is very important to him. This is, uh, something he's worked on in his district, um, and he developed the amendment. He and I don't necessarily see eye to eye, you know, but this is Dan's deal, um, and so I agreed to sign onto it, um, to carry it forward for him. We, we don't disagree on everything, you know, but, you know, the devil's in the details. Um, and so, that being said, there's been some discussion, I talked to the landowner, Mr. Coth, Randy Coth, today, had a good conversation, I like Randy a lot, um, a nice, nice man, and, um, would like to try and get something done with his property. Um, at some point it will be developed, there's no doubt, um, but he wants the extra flexibility, he's talking about, he wants, he wants a commercial component. There is potentially, he's talking to some people about something possibly related to commercial development, perhaps, we don't know what that is. It's not that that couldn't be changed back, we change, we do comprehensive amendments all the time, um, and for that reason, you know, I was with the authors here to start with, with Dan and Sarah and Janelle, and for that reason, I'm gonna be with them, uh, as they wish. But I do think, as we think about this property going forward, we ought to think about if there is some way to do something that the residents are comfortable with, and that, um, Mr. Coth can, can, can use his property and, and move forward with something positive for the city, we ought to look into that, and perhaps it'd be a longer process to do that, I understand that, but, that all being said too, in the past, this whole thing's been a real mess, there's been some real bad behavior, um, by certain individuals. This was brought back for a vote after the Council voted down, voted it down on the senior complex, um, because someone didn't get their way. Um, it was totally ridiculous what went on that led to a lawsuit, that erroneous behavior that took place, very disappointing, costing the city thousands of dollars, unacceptable, um, so that went on. So we do have to do something here, we have to think about all these things, um, and Dan has proposed the amendment, it's his district, he represented it for many years, residents trust him, residents are here tonight talking about it. And so I think we should proceed with an open mind, but I, I'm gonna support the original amendment.
Further comments at all? Dorothy?
Yeah, I was going to say, um, more than anything, to me, this feels like a neighborhood spat between local residents. When I look at the map, I see a major commercial-industrial immediately to the south. I believe the land up on the corner is commercial-industrial, the land behind is ag with an unknown future, and the rest of everything that's there on that side of Fish Hatch, other than a few homes to the south, everything else is industrial-commercial. To me, looking at it without any personalities, just looking at the map and saying, what's there now, what should be there, it looks as though that should have industrial-commercial zoning as a possibility. There's no housing developments on that side of Fish Hatch. I don't know if we want to tuck a housing development in between industrial uses. So for that reason, I'll support keeping the IC within the new.
All right, thank you. Anyone else want to comment at all? Tom?
You know, the, um, I think, obviously, I have respect for Carpenter, and I think most of us do, well, some of us might not, but the fact of the matter is, and the, um, people that signed on, but at the same time, there's another component to this. The other component is the landowner might work with another company, and it might even go in a different direction. So as Dorothy stated, I mean, all I'm saying is it may go in a different direction. Somebody may own the back way out. And, you know, this has been a hard piece of property to talk about. But there's something about this property too, that this Council voted down because they didn't have a back way out. And that's gonna come back to discussion tonight. that's going to come back to discussion tonight, I guarantee you, on something else. But all I'm saying is, this is a piece of property that I actually like the landowner to work with somebody else on, and maybe come up with something else. I don't know what that is. But that is a possibility. So with that being said, I understand where Sarah's coming from, and where Janelle and where the authors are. But it could go in a different direction and a better use of the property. I'll leave it at that.
Further comments at all? Or it sounds like, so, well, first, does anyone want to make, it sounds like there's no amendments or no changes. Because right now, the, the motion is to approve what the plan commission did. Pat, do you want to talk about the options here? If we deny what the plan commission presented, then is it just kind of dead? Or what happens? Or do we, is it better for us to make amendments and then send it back? Do you want to speak to that, please?
Yeah. There are, there are basically three options here. One is you can amend what was brought forth to you by plan commission. And if that was approved, then that amendment would go back to plan commission for reconsideration. If you voted to approve the action of plan commission, obviously, it would be low density residential and industrial commercial. And if you basically just voted on this and it failed, it would stay in its current state of high density residential. So, three vast options here. Obviously, what's before you is the low density residential with a potential for an industrial commercial use from plan commission.
So as a point of clarification, if I made...
Go ahead.
And, and this, I'm sorry, this needs a majority of the council, to not just the majority of members present.
All right, Janelle?
If I make a motion to remove the industrial and commercial component of this, what's the difference in that versus rejecting it and sending it back?
It's, it's the same thing.
Rejecting it doesn't send it back, though.
No, no, no. Voted it down, it wouldn't go back. It would stay as high density residential.
There'd be no changes at all. The, the amendment would fail, and it would stay as high density residential if we just voted it down without amending it.
Yep.
So, from what I've heard, I, I don't want to speak for anyone, but it sounds like there's people who would prefer to amend the motion and send it back to plan commission that was originally done. But I don't want to speak for anyone. And I can't make, someone would like to, Sarah?
Sorry, can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
So if, if I were to make an amendment to remove the industrial, and then that did not move forward, could we still make a motion then that it would move forward? It, it doesn't automatically revert to the high density residential, correct? It, it queues back up as the amendment from plan?
So if you did an amendment to this, and that failed, you still vote on what's before us?
Okay, thank you. Okay. Well, I'd like to make an amendment then to remove the industrial addition that plan commission added, and have it be voted on as to how it was initially brought forward.
I second that.
All right, same to by Janelle. All right. Is there further discussion on the amendment to the, kind of as a plan amendment? It's kind of amendment to the amendment. Further discussion at all? Dorothy?
I'm in favor of just ending this circus.
All right.
If we vote for this amendment, it goes back to plan. Plan talks about it again. These people have to come to more meetings. Just let it go forward with the IC, and we'll deal with it if something comes forward.
Thank you. Anyone else? Was it?
What was the comment?
She just, if I can paraphrase, it would be to, she's recommending to approve what plan commission sent us, so that it doesn't bounce back and forth to plan commission. I believe. I got that correct? Further comments at all? Seeing none. First, we're going to vote, and might as well do a roll call, please, sorry. First is voting on the amendment to the amendment. So if you say yes, you want to switch this back to what was originally submitted. So...
And again, it has to be a majority of the council, not the majority of the council present. And Ms. Strasman's recused herself.
So what happens if it's four? So it'd be like four?
If it, if there's four, it would come down to the mayor.
Okay.
Oh, no, there's no tie. So if there's four, it wouldn't pass.
So it has to have five to pass?
It would have to have five Alders approved.
Okay.
So are we voting on?
On, on Sarah's amendment first.
Remove the industrial. Okay.
Yep.
Alder Barr?
Yes.
Alder Clouter?
No.
Alder Crowsey?
No.
Alder Rice?
Yes.
Alder Schroder?
Yes.
Alder Scott?
No.
Yeah, three and three.
All right. So because there's not five...
You wouldn't vote.
Two.
All right, our city attorney is making the recommendation for the amendment. The mayor can break the tie, but for the final vote, we wouldn't have a tie in this situation because there's not a majority of the council in one direction or another.
Yeah, just to provide a little bit of clarification, where this is coming from is from a state statute 66.1001, sub 4, sub C. And it says that, that talks about the ordinance that the council adopts to amend the comprehensive plan. And specifically, the language is that the political subdivision may not enact an ordinance under this paragraph unless the comprehensive plan contains all of the elements. And an ordinance, which, I apologize, that's not really relevant, but an ordinance may not be enacted or be adopted under this paragraph, but only by a majority vote of the members elect. So members elect, meaning the council members, as opposed to the members present. So in order to adopt a resolution, a resolution, the plan commission likewise would have that same requirement. And in order to adopt the ordinance, the council needs to have the majority of members elect. So five votes is what it takes to adopt an ordinance. Now, as far as amending, I think procedurally, I think we're operating under the Roberts Rules of Orders in terms of amendments. But in, to pass this ordinance, you will need five votes.
So the mayor should vote on this item and then proceed accordingly.
Okay. So I'll vote aye on Sarah's amendment.
Okay, so you're back to the original motion, then?
It's the original that was submitted by council members to the plan commission.
That's correct.
Okay. Any further discussion on what is now the original motion that was sent to plan commission? Dorothy?
So now we are voting to send it back to plan.
Essentially, if you vote for this, it would go back to plan. If it, if it's denied, then it, I guess it dies?
If it's denied, it would stay in its current condition.
Okay.
That is correct.
So if it fails, I mean, all right. All right. Further questions?
So we're voting on the main motion now?
It would be the main motion.
Amendment is reamended.
Okay. Yep, exactly.
And is the mayor able to break a tie on that?
No.
No.
There wouldn't be a tie.
Well, there's not going to be a tie.
You can't have a tie because you need five votes to adopt.
Right. And there's an odd number of Alders voting.
For, well, for comp plan amendment. And this is a special to...
This is a special rule that comes from state statute. That's correct.
Okay. All right. Further questions at all? All right. So seeing none. We can roll call again. And so an aye vote would be to essentially send this back to plan commission and ask them to reconsider. And then a nay would be that it's going to die and remain high density residential. Got that right? All right.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Sarah.
So I, just the legal jargon got me confused. So you're saying that no matter what, we still have to have a majority, so, of council members, not even just present?
Correct.
So then how, for tonight?
Five out of eight.
Okay.
So regardless whether you have eight members present, seven members present, six members present, you need five aye votes, or five yes votes. And again, that's not based on our, any Fitchburg rules. That's based on the state comprehensive planning statute.
Just a point of information. When we had passed some of the North Stoner Prairie amendments, there was a tiebreaker with, it was four to four. Mayor Gonzalez at the time broke the tie on, on several of those, those amendments. So if we have a four, four votes of the members present, that would carry, wouldn't it?
No, because you only...
No, because you only have one, two, three. Six members voting, and the mayor would make it seven. So if there was a tie, you would only have four votes.
Wait, so he's not able to vote because there's no tie?
Well, there could be a tie, but it wouldn't make five votes. So I think you need to vote and see how it comes out.
And a member that has recused themselves is still considered part of the council, so still is part of that.
Right, they're still a blacklisted person.
Thank you, sorry.
Right.
Yep. Yep. All right. So Dan, further question?
I'm going to make a motion that we table to date certain.
All right.
To the next meeting.
Is there a second? Or it's essentially, I think it's postponed on table, right?
Postponed to date certain.
To next meeting. Okay. Is there a second for postponing?
Second.
Oh, Tom, okay. And...
Let me explain why.
For postponing, you can. Yeah, that's the difference. You're supposed to postpone because you can also. Yeah, Dan, go ahead.
If my calculations are correct, we're going to have a four, three vote on this. Okay. So that being said, this would not...
If I could interrupt, the Alders should never assume the vote.
Yeah.
My recommendation would be to vote or to postpone, not to discuss potential outcomes of a vote.
I think, though, we have a better chance of moving forward with some sort of package with all the Alders presence, present.
It depends what side of the issue you're on.
Can I move to reconsider the previous vote?
I don't know, Pat, is that, I guess I need help on the Roberts Rule.
No, the amendment was passed, so you need to vote on the amended, and the amendment as presented with the original motion.
All right, now we have the motion to the table as, or motion to postpone on the table anyway, so.
As amended.
As amended.
Of course, there could be future amendments, that's...
Dorothy, question?
So if that fails, we can bring back another amendment to the original?
The postponing fails.
Or to go back to the plan as amended by plan?
If postponing fails, then we can, you can do all kinds of fun things after that.
I certainly think you could amend an amendment, or...
Yeah, you can amend it again.
It, it can get hairy, but I think we need to deal with one issue at a time.
Yeah, I, I think this body needs to vote on the amendment or not vote on the amendment.
All right.
Vote it for it or against it.
Yep. So the motion right now is to postpone to the next meeting, October, or September 10th, I believe, off the top of my head. And so might as well do a roll call on this. So an aye would be postponing it to next meeting, and nay would be you want to vote on it again right now.
Alder Barr?
Yes.
Alder Clouter?
Aye.
Alder Crowsey?
No.
Alder Rice?
Aye.
Alder Schroder?
Aye.
Alder Scott?
No.
Four to two.
Four to two, so it's postponed until next meeting?
It will be postponed.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. All right. Then moving on to number seven. Tom, do you want to make a motion?
Resolution R 157-19, PP 2307-19, resolution approving request by Dan Day, agent for Fitchburg, Fitchburg Campus 2 LLC, for approval of preliminary plat for Crescent Crossing. It's lot one, CSM 8023. The plan commission approved and I move.
All right, move approval by Tom. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ann. And you mentioned plan did approve. Why don't we have applicants go ahead and do their presentation? Dan and Brian, if you'd like to come up. And then I've got some comments from the public after that.
Thank you. If you could just hit play on it. Sorry, I can't do that with this. Under slideshow, up top. In the middle, there you go. From the beginning, all the way to left. All right. There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, my name's Brian Munson with Vandewall Associates. Thank you for the opportunity to address the body tonight in regards to the Crescent Crossing project. With me today is Dan Day with Norfjord Kaki. Between the two of us, we've been working with Veridian on the design of their neighborhoods going on roughly 20 years now. So this is one of many. We're excited to be here tonight to talk about this project. And I'd like to take just a few minutes. Apologize for those that have seen the presentation before. This hasn't changed a whole lot, but we'll try to go through fairly quickly if you have. Again, here on behalf of Veridian Homes, excited to bring a project that really hits on a lot of the design principles we use whenever we approach a property. And there's really three key ones that we use. The first is looking at housing variety. And it's not just housing variety within the project, but within the community. How does this project form an asset of housing that either isn't present or expands upon opportunities for homeownership within a community? And we're excited that this project really is designed to diversify the types of housing that are available for purchase for residents within the community. The second is vibrancy. Does, details matter? We look very closely at the architecture of all these projects, both from the streetscape, the front porch, the design of the houses, the layout of the entire plat, and how that fits within the context to create a walkable environment within the project, extend the networks that are around us, and become an asset and a part of the greater community. Because this isn't just a project. We see this as something that will live on into the future and be part of Fitchburg. So we're excited to bring this forward with, with an eye towards how it blends into the neighborhood and beyond. The final principle really is sustainability. We look very closely at the environmental systems, not just the stormwater management and the design of the plat, but as it relates to the design of the house, energy efficiency within and throughout. So sustainability doesn't end at the curb, it goes all the way through the project. And so we look very closely at how that fits into the context of developing a neighborhood. One little thing I will note from this slide, you can see locations in all of these pictures. Every single picture in this presentation is from a Veridian neighborhood that we've worked on over the course of many years. And you'll see some neighborhoods that have been in place, Lake Smith Crossing, going on 19 years now. So these are not hypothetical ideas for us. It's something that we've worked through many different communities, both the details of how you build houses, and different scales, and how you implement plats is something we're well versed in and we're excited to bring to this project. To relate, of course, we're at the northeast corner of Lacy and Seminole, originally designed as part of the North Stoner Prairie neighborhood, which of course, has undergone a lot of changes around us. Immediately north, the Moltke family was replaced with the Black Hawk Church. To the east, the William Ryan Homes plat is now working through implementation onto multiple phases. And then, of course, to our west continues to emerge a very vibrant employment center. And so we're excited both to diversify the housing in the neighborhood, but also offer price points for those workers immediately adjacent to the site. To be able to find housing that's not rental housing, but able to have homeownership opportunities within this project, and really tap into that employment base that needs housing. That is a challenge throughout, not just Fitchburg, through every community in Dan County faces that same challenge. As we looked at this, again, we, we designed this to meet the Clouter amendment in terms of the discussion that you had very recently about modifying the designations on here. We took that to heart and developed a plan that responds to that. So it meets the five to nine dwelling units per acre for the northern portion, and the five to six for the southern portion when you look at the overall project. And we really took that to heart and tried to make sure that we were meeting that as we moved into the project. To talk about the project itself, again, we've got 65 single family homes clustered kind of on the eastern portion of the site. We then have some twin homes divided into multiple districts that kind of form the transition point from the neighborhood out to Seminole, Lacy, and the Black Hawk Church site. This will be served by a full complement of public streets. The extension of Mylon Lane picks it up exactly where it is plotted to our east. There's a circular internal road where the houses will all run onto. And then all of the project will be accessed internally through private carriage lanes. the project will be accessed internally through private carriage lanes. This of course is coupled up with a preliminary plat, which is the first item. The second item on your agenda for this, this item is of course, the zoning to support that. Again, these are not hypotheticals. These are examples that we've used and done through many different municipalities, including here in Fitchburg with the Uptown Crossing project, which has been very successful implementation of that neighborhood on behalf of Veridian Homes. And found a true niche in terms of the interest from the buyers. And I think as you see that begin to reach sellout, this is a logical then transition to help address some of the housing needs within the community. This again breaks out into two different components. The first component being the twin homes. This again from Smith Crossing in Sun Prairie, located at kind of our transition to the periphery around us. Forty-six total units. These are attached single-family products, so they are fee simple lots available for purchase. They're three to four bedroom, and they're really targeted towards an entry-level buyer that may otherwise have to be in an apartment, or potentially even some downsizer buyers that are looking for either different housing needs at different stages in their lifecycle, or looking for less maintenance repair from a larger lot. Again, served by private alleys that would then form the transition out to Seminole and Lacy. Here are just some examples of the different types of housing. These are divided into both tuck-under garage access, where the garage is below the house. This allows us to transition some grade within the project as well as open up some opportunities for additional buffering along Lacy and open space within the project. But that's not all of the twin homes. Some of them will also be flat-site twin homes where the garages are at grade with the first floor. Again, diversifying the types of housing that are available for purchase within the project. And these are all designed to be consistent, whether they are twin homes, tuck-under, flat-site, or single-family, you'll find that the architecture of the project, both inside and out, is consistent. So that there's not a differentiation in terms of, of the type of finishes on the outside or inside, depending on what type of format you're in. The single-family, again, is carriage access, will form 65 units along the eastern edge, transitioning to the William Ryan Homes project to the east. These are two to four bedroom and are targeted at the exact same buyer groups, offering opportunities for homeownership at that entry level and downsizer buyers, served by a private carriage lane. A couple of points about the single-family is that they really do diversify the price point and format availability within not just the neighborhood, but the community. These are homes that are not currently available for purchase within the greater community. And we think that really reflects both the North Stoner Prairie, as well as some of the other plans that you've adopted about really seeking opportunities for diversified housing within the community. I would also point out that these homes, just because they're served by an alley, do not mean that they're smaller homes. These homes are very comparable to what you might find on a street access lot in certain configurations, but what we've done is we've taken the garage, which is driving part of the width of the lot, moved it from the side to the back. That allows for a more compact lot. It does change the yard configuration, but we've found that this has appealed to a lot of people because it offers a price point that otherwise wouldn't be possible. By having the narrower lots and the same infrastructure, we're able to create opportunity to support the affordability component of this project, because we're spreading the same infrastructure, the same street has to get built regardless of your, your lot width. But we're able to spread that across more homes and create an opportunity that is significant towards each and every house. The other aspect is because it is a diverse piece of housing within the greater community, we recognize that it's not going to appeal to everyone. But the idea is, it will appeal to a lot of people at that price point, and it becomes a bridge. They can move out of that apartment, buy a first-time home in a project like this, and then they can cycle into other housing as opportunities arrive. But absent that kind of bridge, you can see a gap between where the renter is stuck, where they can't afford a larger house. Bringing some homes in this, this range offers some diversity that they can then appeal to. And again, as I mentioned, this is comparable in configuration to what you see in the Uptown Crossing. These are pictures from just a couple of weeks ago of that neighborhood, which as I mentioned, is now reaching full build-out and has now into construction on the last homes within the project. The final piece of the neighborhood are the amenities. We do see some open space and some buffers incorporated into this project to serve as a gathering point within this neighborhood, but we also see that this is an important piece of the Stoner neighborhood and that it will offer fee in lieu of dedication to support the development of the North Stoner Prairie Park, which is immediately east of us by about two blocks. So you can see our site located right here is amply served by the dedicated park that's adjacent to the school complex and was placed as part of the North Stoner Prairie. It is accessed by what will be a dedicated off-street path that extends from Minong directly to the park. So we see the need of recreation supplied within the greater neighborhood by that park. And so by offering some fee in lieu of, we see some opportunities to increase some facilities within that park. But we do offer a small open space within the project. The other aspect that we've picked up on is the regional network of trails. We are extending and agree with the staff comment about the extension of the regional trails east and west through our site. So immediately on the north side of the site, we will be constructing the path that's actually in the easement that's on the Black Hawk Church site. It will slightly divert onto our property and then extend and connect to the east. We will also be extending the trail on the, the north side of Lacy Road all the way east-west across our site. And we're excited that those trails both offer connections to the neighbors throughout Fitchburg, but also strong connections to the employment base to the west. We will also accent that, of course, with sidewalks on both sides of every street and internal connections that allow the residents to connect out to the surrounding street network as well. The final piece of the open space is the stormwater management, something we, we take a very close look at. And we're, we're comfortable that not just the review by the, the city, but the county will help fully vet all of the components of the stormwater management. We've worked closely with city staff to recognize some of the regional aspects of the stormwater that have to be addressed with this project, that are coming off-site, but traveling through will be accommodated. And at the same time, we will, will address all of the stormwater requirements on our site to support the development of the project. As I mentioned, this is a continuation of a theme. It's something we've done successfully in Middleton, Sun Prairie, Madison, throughout Dane County and throughout southeast Wisconsin. And so we're excited to bring this to you tonight. Final piece being that we will establish an HOA that addresses the long-term maintenance of the carriage lanes, the open space, all the requirements. It's something we've done consistently throughout our neighborhood, so there will be one HOA that guides all of the projects, whether you are in single-family or twin homes. And that will be professionally managed as part of the setup of the HOA through an additional company that then oversees establishment and maintenance of that throughout. And final note on that is that Veridian stays involved with their HOAs all the way through to turnover to make sure that everything is running smoothly, because we recognize that all the way through the project is not just how does it look at the first phase, but how does it act and operate into the future. We want to make sure that is handled appropriately. From a timing standpoint, this is the first of many steps. So this is the preliminary plat stage. We've been in front of the plan commission multiple times with the concept plan. We'll be working this fall in close coordination with city staff about the detailed development of the plan sets that they will need to review as part of the final plat. With that final plat, we'll be coming a specific implementation plan to address all of the components of the neighborhood as well, with an eye towards approval into early next year with a goal of construction in 2020. We see this project building out over multiple phases in general, from north to south. That gives us a couple of opportunities to continue to work with city, because we recognize that there's ongoing planning in regards to Seminole Highway and the Lacy intersection, as well as those frontages. And so by phasing the project in that manner, that gives us opportunities to continue to work with the city so that if additional right-of-way is necessary, we have designed that opportunity into the plat. And so we'll be able to manage that and accommodate that as the design is known in the future. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions. If you want to take additional public comments, we'll be here after that as well.
All right, yeah, first we'll do some public comments and then I'm sure there'll be some questions.
Yep, thank you very much.
All right, I have some people that wish to speak. First I have Rita Hendricks, and then after that will be Thomas Thorson.
Good evening. I'm Rita Hendricks, a resident of Burnwood for 15 years. I'm here supporting neighbors because I feel we need to be concerned about more than just our individual neighborhoods. We need to be concerned about all of Fitchburg. Crescent Crossing looks like a good project, but there are major concerns. First, traffic is a major issue there, and I've noted it more than once and heard others talk about how terrible the intersection is and how much traffic is on Seminole that people can't even get out onto there from the neighborhoods that are already in existence. It's been bad for a long time. And obviously, promises that it will be fixed are just that, they're promises, and I don't know if citizens can believe in the promises that they've had. I have a real hard time believing in, we'll fix it later. Trust us. Second, using gross density is wrong. It sets a precedence that other developers are going to use against Fitchburg. There's a reason for having gross and net numbers, and they shouldn't be ignored. Third, stormwater issues are a major concern, and I don't want the city of Fitchburg and its taxpayers to be burdened if there are mistakes. Look at the Seminole Forest kettle. No one seems to know how it happened or who's responsible, but I've been told by friends that live in that neighborhood that the damage is there for years, decades. That hundred-year-old trees were absolutely killed because someone changed something. We're gonna trust? Pounds require maintenance, and such maintenance should not fall on the taxpayers to benefit a developer. Fitchburg needs to grow, there's no question about it, and all citizens should be considered. We can't have "trust us" because it hasn't worked. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I have Tom, and then Jay Hockmuth next.
Good evening, Mayor Richardson and city council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight on the preliminary plat and the rezoning request for Crescent Crossing. I'm Tom Thorson, I've lived in Fitchburg for 32 years. I was actually on the committee seven years ago that did the North Stoner Prairie planning, so I'm very familiar with it. We worked for 18 months to come up with it. And conceptually, we, I think myself and neighbors are very supportive of, of this. It's gonna bring, you know, some basically, I want to say affordable and attainable, might be a better word, attainable housing to peoples, and that's something that's really in demand, so that's very good. However, I think there are some things that can be done to help this project so that it's better, and these are the things that we'd like to comment on. Currently, you know, you've got this consistency in figuring net versus gross, and that is, is something that you really need to get figured. You should not be going with gross, and I'll get into some examples later. Traffic safety issues need to be addressed for the neighborhood, and the stormwater, stormwater plan certification needs to happen and sign-offs before the development in order to prevent flooding and to protect taxpayers. It's very similar to what Rita said just a minute ago. Get it done ahead of time instead of, oh, yeah, it'll get taken care of. Sign-off. Consistency versus net, gross is calculating number, you need to have consistency in the calculations. Consistency is extremely important in almost every endeavor. Consistency allows for measurement, it creates accountability. People pay attention to your message when you're consistent, people will follow your rules and standards. Consistency applies to parenting, it applies to people management, and it also applies to government standards. So you, you really need to, when I called Tom Havel and Susan Badke about this issue three, four years ago, I got a consistent answer. Okay, we don't count the, you know, we take away the, the net, we take away the roads, we take away the stormwater, we take away wetlands. Because it, it's common sense. If you have an eight-acre parcel, you know, you got four hour, four acres of wetland, you don't start with eight acres. You, you, you know that it needs to be four. So you have to use common sense on that. Traffic is an issue, and with 100-plus units, I'm concerned about would a fire truck be able to get through if you got all the roads blocked? Right now, when you go by the church, there are times it's blocked, you only got one way. That's not a good situation. You should have a second entrance available for safety reasons for fire trucks. And then third, on stormwater, stormwater again, needs to be signed off. For the last now year and a half, Fitchburg has lost their stormwater engineers.
Tom, that's three minutes.
Okay, I'll wrap up. And the kettle is a classic example. Why did a 24-inch pipe go down to a 12? Why did the developer have to pay that, you know, extra thousand feet? Why did, you know, there, there's a lot of questions there that are unanswered. It's, you know, the taxpayer shouldn't have to pay, it should get fixed ahead of time.
Thank you.
Hello, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to appear here tonight on this matter. My name is Jay Hockmuth, I've been a resident of Fitchburg for 33 years. Tonight, please end the 20 months of controversy surrounding the 21-acre parcel at the corner of Lacy and Seminole Highway. While the proposal before you tonight is, is much better, and we've heard a lot of reasons why, please vote tonight to add the following approval conditions to those recommended by staff that are listed in the agenda packet. The number of housing units should be limited to 109 rather than the 121 proposed. Mike, there's an attachment to my comments that goes into great detail about how that number was derived and why. No more than 60 lots be sold until Seminole Highway upgrades are completed or Minong Lane is connected to a through street in the neighborhood to the east that has not been platted. There may be other, there may be other arrangements that could accomplish the same outcome. Our, conceptually, we just wanted to get that on the table. And the preliminary applicant reimburses city for the expenses the city incurs to verify the capacity of the stormwater calculations. To the extent that city staff doesn't have the expertise to do that, I understand there's a contract with Dane County, and maybe Dane County has the expertise. But this was, this was prepared by a highly reputable engineer, and those calculations for the sake of example, probably, given the old adage, trust but verify, they should probably be replicated to make sure that this, these basins are in fact, large enough. And one of the reasons they are so large is because of the number of units on this piece of property, 121 proposed. The, an interesting point here is that the, the 109 units needed to avoid setting a precedent rather than the 121, if the two acres of land created by reducing to, by a reduction of 12 units is dedicated to a public park, the fee in lieu of parkland dedication would be reduced by $52,000, which would help keep Crescent Crossing homes more affordable. In addition, it's unfair to Crescent Crossing residents to not have a park maintained by the city in their neighborhood and yet have them paying property taxes, a portion of their property tax is going to pay for parks in a whole bunch of other neighborhoods throughout the city. You've already heard about traffic issues on Seminole Highway. Bottom line is, there's a number of projects that are already been approved, they're under construction, they're gonna go online, they're gonna feed traffic into Seminole Highway, with one significant exception to this particular property. They have another alternative way to get to those, at projects under construction. And that distinguishes them from this, which is, there's no way.
That's three minutes, Jay.
Except one, thank you. And then with regard to the stormwater, again, I emphasize, we would just prefer a more independent verification, but perhaps Dane County has sufficient expertise, and if so, so be it. So please vote tonight to add these conditions that are recommended, those recommended by staff. If not possible, please delay a vote on these two applications and send it back to staff to prepare a memo to explain why these two or three conditions aren't necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. I have a number of people who have registered, just registered. I have Susan Easterday from Fitchburg registering in opposition. Both on here says not support these two items unless the amount of units is reduced and conditions regarding traffic and stormwater are added. She did send an email to the council as well. Similar, it says, we live within blocks that propose Crescent Development and oppose these two agenda items unless housing density is reduced and traffic and stormwater concerns are addressed with additional conditions. We agree with concerns as expressed by leadership of Lacy Heights and Seminole Forest Neighborhood Associations. John Easterday from Fitchburg registering in opposition. Vote against unless density reduced. Vote against unless stormwater and traffic concerns are addressed, conditions added. Michael, I can't quite read this.
Aricito?
No, it starts with a P.
Sorry.
I know that one. Per and Sway, Per and Swy, Per and Oski maybe, from Fitchburg, registering in opposition. Please vote against these two items unless the number of units is reduced and conditions dealing with traffic and stormwater are addressed. And Maria Parovinsky, sorry, I'm sorry, from Fitchburg, registering in opposition. Please vote against these two items unless the number of units is reduced and conditions dealing with traffic and stormwater are addressed to our satisfaction. Don Strasman in Fitchburg, registering in opposition. Traffic and stormwater are considered. Dale Hendricks from Fitchburg, registering in opposition. Ensure the traffic and stormwater issues are addressed, use net and not gross numbers. Ensure the traffic and stormwater issues are addressed, use net and not gross numbers. David Nelson from Pittsburgh, registering in opposition. Please vote against these two items unless the number of units is reduced and conditions dealing with traffic and stormwater are added. Thank you. Christine Nelson from Pittsburgh, registering in opposition. Please vote against these two items unless the number of units is reduced and conditions dealing with traffic and stormwater are added. Gary Pedoni from Pittsburgh, registering in opposition. Please vote in opposition unless the number of units is reduced and conditions dealing with traffic and stormwater are added. Thank you. Josie Pedoni from Pittsburgh, registering in opposition. Oh, shoot, I thought that was from the ordinance, the last one. Sorry, Josie, I missed that one. All right, that was tabled, so you can submit it again in two weeks, sorry. Kim Thorson from Pittsburgh, registering in opposition. Above the matter. Michael Ircito, registering, from Pittsburgh, registering in opposition. We are asking the city and developers to be consistent in using net acreage, not gross acreage, when calculating housing density allowed for current and future developments. Karen Reed from Pittsburgh, registering in opposition. Please vote against these two items unless the number of units is reduced and conditions dealing with traffic and stormwater are added. Josh Strassman from Pittsburgh, registering in opposition. Please vote against these two items unless the number of units is reduced and conditions dealing with traffic and stormwater are added. Crystal Strassman from Pittsburgh, registering in opposition. Please vote against these two items unless the number of units is reduced and conditions dealing with traffic and stormwater are added. Cheryl Strassman from Pittsburgh, registering in opposition. Please vote against these two items unless the number of units is reduced and conditions dealing with traffic and stormwater are added. David Strassman from Pittsburgh, registering in opposition. Please vote against these two items, number of units too high, traffic and stormwater issues. Catherine Dudgeon from Pittsburgh, registering, I think it's opposition, reading the comments here. Please vote against these two items unless the number of units is reduced and conditions dealing with traffic and stormwater are added. Thank you. Diane Wakely from Pittsburgh, registering in opposition. Please vote against these two items unless the number of units is reduced and conditions dealing with traffic and stormwater are added. John Thies from Pittsburgh, registering in opposition. Adjust traffic and stormwater issues, reduce the number of units. Cheryl Thies from Pittsburgh, registering in opposition. Adjust traffic and stormwater issues, reduce number of units. Lisa West from Pittsburgh, registering in opposition. Please vote against these two items unless the number of units is reduced and conditions dealing with traffic and stormwater are added. Ellie Schatz from Pittsburgh, registering in opposition. Please vote against these two items unless the number of units is reduced and conditions dealing with traffic and stormwater are added. Paul Schatz from Pittsburgh, registering in opposition. Please vote against these two items unless the number of units is reduced and conditions dealing with traffic and stormwater are added. Michael Cummins from Pittsburgh, registering in opposition. Please vote against these two items unless the number of units is reduced and conditions dealing with traffic and stormwater are added. Stan Rico, I can't read the writing, sorry, from Pittsburgh, registering in opposition. I request that I vote against both these items unless the number of units is decreased and traffic conditions and stormwater issues, problems are addressed. Leslie Ream from Pittsburgh, registering in opposition. I request that you vote against the two items above, please, unless conditions pertaining to stormwater and traffic are added and the number of units is decreased. Susan Blesner from Pittsburgh, registering in opposition. Please vote against these two items unless the number of units is reduced to reflect net acreage and conditions dealing with stormwater and traffic are sufficiently addressed. Colleen Chase, from Pittsburgh, registering in opposition. I wish to register in opposition of the above matter unless additional conditions are applied to hold this development accountable for impacts relevant to the longstanding concerns of stormwater and traffic management. These concerns are exasperated when more units than contemplated with standard density determinations are considered. Is it not in the city of Pittsburgh's best interest to actively avoid another water fiasco such as what was experienced in Seminole Glen Kettle last year? And specific conditions on the front end should incentivize the applicant to complete important factors prior to beginning this process. Even when the Public Works Department raised specific concerns about drainage in the review of this application, applicant did not address them, and said the said plans are too preliminary, and they will likely be drained with the soil similar to the lands to the north of this property. There is no argument that hasn't worked out well to, for the lands just north of this property. And that is all I have for public comments, unless I miss someone. Otherwise, comments, questions from everyone up here? Dorothy?
Well, I've got a number for the fellows.
The one thing that I wanted to note is, all of the driveways are in that back outer circle, the carriageway?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, how many garages are there per unit, garage stalls?
They will vary. A portion of the stalls will have tandem garages, a portion of the twin homes. All the single-family will have two-car stall garages. And then, where we have any issues where there may be a reduction in parking per what's been proposed, there will be additional parking supplied within the alleyway.
Okay, that was one of my questions, is public parking, will parking be permitted in the alleys?
The design is done very intentionally to make sure that any parking that would be delivered within the alleys is in designated parking spots, either in the garage or adjacent to the garage, outside of the right-of-way necessary for the alley. We've designed our alleys throughout our projects very carefully because we recognize that offers a secondary fire access point, and we want to make sure that those are clear. It also offers additional circulation with the neighborhood, and we want to make sure they're clear. And so when we design the placement of the garage, we look very closely at where that distance is from the garage to the travelway of the alley to make sure that if there is going to be a parking stall, it is at least 18 to 20 feet in distance, and if there's not going to be, we try to pull the garage to less than five, so that it's very clear there is not a space to park a car. And it's worked successfully to enforce, not just through signage, but through physical constraints where people can and can't park within the alleys.
I was going through the covenant document, and that says, basically, the only place you're allowed to park is in the garage, says you're not allowed to park in driveways, other than, it says, for 12 hours for loading unloading.
Correct.
Yep.
Obviously, there'd be parking on the public street also.
Yeah, the inner, inner circle.
Inner circle, yes.
I think about Christmas Eve.
Yep.
When I think about public parking.
Yeah, we view the on-street parking as serving for guest access, and it's not the primary place we want to see our residents park on a daily basis.
The reality that I'm aware of is that every adult that lives in a house has a car. If they have teenage children, the kids have cars too.
Yep.
So it worries me to have very, very limited parking. So we've got homes up by us and probably all around the city where there'll be a two-car garage with presumably cars in there, if not, otherwise it might be being used for storage, and the cars are parked in the driveway. We have some houses that have four cars in the driveway, and that, I agree, gets excessive. But when everybody who's 16 or greater that lives in a house has a car, that becomes a real problem.
Yep.
So that's something that I'll be kind of keeping an eye on. Something that I saw in the covenant was, there's no ability to have a little bit of a shed for your lawnmower.
That's correct, that would be expected to be in the garage.
And what happens with trash service?
Trash service typically, in a situation like this, would be collected through the alley, the private alley, and that's been addressed differently in different municipalities, something we'll work closely with the municipality to determine. For example, in Sun Prairie, trash pickup is through private contract, by, through the HOA, as it is in Madison. In other municipalities, the, they private contract anyhow, and so the private contractors would then utilize the alley for their trash pickup. But we do anticipate that the trash pickup would be serviced through the alleys, and the designs are done to accommodate that.
And I know the ordinance in Pittsburgh, though it's not followed very closely, is that trash containers are to be out of sight. So, we're saying those need to be in the garage too?
Yes.
I'm just getting pretty full, make sure they're big enough. I was happy, it sounds like for stormwater, you guys are doing 100% plus, stay on, which is great.
So the stormwater's designed, we've done the stormwater analysis pre, and then we submitted it with this. It takes into account, you know, all the flows from on our site, along with the regional stuff that's going, is basically going by us. So we've sized this stormwater basin to, stormwater basins, excuse me, to handle all the stormwater requirements that are necessary through state and local statutes that can be applied to it, yes.
I appreciate that. The last thing that I have is that, again, in the covenant, under membership and voting rights, it says very specifically that renters, called tenants, are not allowed to participate. What I'd like to do is work with you guys somehow to get language in the covenant that points out that they may be assigned proxy if they have a long-term lease with the owner, that they can participate within the neighborhood or the homeowner association, whatever we're calling it, as a long-term tenant there, as a proxy of the owner. I'd like that specified in that covenant, if that's possible.
We'll take a look at that, I'm trying to think what the downside of that would be, and I'm not the total expert on the CCRs that Veridian usually puts together for these projects, so we'll take that back and talk to them about it, certainly.
Okay. My concern is, is that renters get dissed a whole lot.
Mm-hmm.
I would like to see them welcomed to participate as a member of the organization that runs the area, particularly if there's many, many, many people in this community that rent homes that have been there for 10, 15 years and have no intention of, they're definitely not transients.
Right.
No, and again, our focus is on homeownership opportunities, but we can certainly look at those and talk to Veridian about where instances occur, as in any neighborhood, where single-family homes can be rented, just to make sure those are being addressed. And I would also extend on that, that we've included, you know, trying to find a way to prohibit Airbnb rentals through the CCR, is actually something, I believe, Oliver Rice mentioned previously, so, you know, we're working through those, and that's something Veridian takes very seriously, is the CCRs.
This says very clearly, no leases under 30 days.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
So, I'm relatively okay with that.
Yep.
I'd like to at least start by saying, it's been a long process, and thanks, guys, for all the work you've done.
Thank you. It's been hard, it's been long for you guys too, so.
Been on both sides.
Longer for you guys.
Been on both sides.
Much longer.
I think you guys have met most of the objectives and concerns of the citizens. I do have a question for city staff, and it has to do with, I just learned, I don't know if some elders know this, but what happens is, for water, after a plat has been proved or whatever, I'll just, you know, it goes to Dane County, and we hired the county, which is probably a good thing, I kind of like the idea, and they're relooking at the water, and we didn't, I wasn't aware of it, we don't have experts on staff, and they're helping us with that, in other words, the, I'm gonna read what I actually wrote, it has to do, the, there's Veridian Homes reimburse the city for the expense that occurred to verify the capability calculations for the proposed water basin.
Yes.
They do?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that was...
The reviews by the county and the city are paid for by the developer.
Okay, so that's, I want the citizens to be aware of that, and Dorothy too, that be aware that, that was a big question I had, okay.
And, and at the last meeting, this body voted to approve that based on actual cost, so whatever cost is incurred in that review, whether it be brief, if the plans are done correctly and there's not much inspection, or if it's extended, the developer would pay accordingly.
That's good, good, okay. Could you put back on the screen the map, or what we had up there?
I'll do my best.
Overall picture. That one, can you enlarge that at all?
Play from Kurt's slide.
It's coming. You'll see, you'll see.
And then...
Could that be enlarged at all?
Better?
Not as good, there you go, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine. I've actually had some neighbors call me on this project, and are interested in buying lots, are looking at this development. And, one thing I'm hearing is, if you look at this plot, they do have, and I give them credit for it, they do have a greenway, or a green space, they don't have a park. Now, let's look 20 years, 10 years down the road, when none of us are up here. This project will still be there. This project will get bigger. This project will probably bring in a lot of people from Epic that want to live in Pittsburgh. Don't quote me on that. But it could happen. There's no park. I don't know. It was raised tonight by one of the residents, but the situation is, there's a lot of houses and no green space. Now, I know, you can walk down the path, maybe, by the school, and get to the park, whatever, but there isn't a park here. I think it's important when you're talking 100, I'm just using a number, 100-plus homes, that there's a park. For some of the new elders, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but you come down Lacy Road, you turn onto Seminole Highway, and you're gonna go north like you're going into Madison, and you're gonna be looking at the back of garages. Am I right? And that's okay, I'm not criticizing that, I'm just saying, there's, you're gonna be looking at the back of garages, I'm pretty sure that, as you go down Seminole Highway, 'cause the garages face, the back of them face Seminole Highway?
Yes, the garages do face towards the alley, and that's why we've included the buffer spaces on either side. These are not all stormwater, but are intended to give space for landscaping.
So, I guess I want to throw that out to the council for discussion, or is that something that you can care about, or you don't? I guess, at this one, I don't want to make an amendment if people are saying, nah, we don't need it, Tom, we can walk down the street. You see what's happening here? It's, it's a green space, and they did do it, but there's no park.
Good.
I'll rest my comment for a minute.
For now, all right. Dorothy?
Dorothy?
I guess one comment that I would make is, we talk about the number of parks that we have...
You had to talk into the mic.
I says, we have talked a lot about the number of parks to be maintained. Are you talking about having a city, a park that the city would be expected to maintain?
No, they have an HOA.
So you're talking, insisting they put in playground equipment and stuff?
That would be their call.
I guess I'm, I'm used to the older neighborhoods up in the north end, like, without access to the Nine Springs Golf Course, all the buildings around Fairways and Pines, apartment buildings, don't have a park. Developers typically do not put in playgrounds for probably liability reasons. For garages, I don't have a problem with, I, I drive down McKee Road from Seminole Highway over to Chapel Valley, probably pretty much daily, and that's like a great big alleyway. There's just, all, all you see are fences, it's people's backyards, the backs are turned to McKee Road.
Sorry, I wasn't criticizing the garages, that's not my point, I was just trying to show you what it, you know, what you're dealing with there.
If it gets ugly, I'm certain they'll either landscaping or fencing to add buffer between garages and visible highway.
I want to make sure we're not going back and forth, everyone, by the way, we need to make sure that whoever's speaking is speaking, and once they're done, we get other people to speak, but we want to make sure we don't have back and forth. All right, you can go ahead and finish, sorry.
I think that was it, thank you.
No, I just want to, because we're discussing this point, I, I know that the, this is a discussion among the alders, but I think it's important that the alders understand where the park is in proximity to this neighborhood, so I thought the developer could enlighten the group.
If you could pull up the, from current slide, actually, the very next slide shows the adopted plat to our east, so if you could go from current slide on this, I'd be happy to point that out.
That one, right there?
Right there, yep, okay. So again, to, to put us in the context of both the adopted neighborhood plan, Stoner Prairie Park was designed in the North Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Plan to be the park that services all the residents adjacent in all directions. This 20-acre parcel keys into that. We have a small gathering space in support of the neighborhood in terms of opportunity for, for meeting neighbors. Right down the end of Minong Lane, this platted right-of-way is where the bike path extension will go east to Stoner Prairie Park, so we're literally a couple hundred feet away from access to that park, and that was how the neighborhood plan was designed, I think it's a function of, you know, when you look at a neighborhood, it's, it's not financially feasible for every single parcel to have a park, and so as the park networks are put together, the neighborhoods feed into sub-neighborhood parks. We did talk with the Parks Commission, gave an informal presentation to them about this proposal, and they were supportive of the concept of having a small area, which would be maintained by the HOA, but that would then, they saw Stoner Prairie Park as that neighborhood-scale park, which would give recreation space to residents, not just of our project, but all the adjoining properties.
So I just want to...
Stand by.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just want to ask about that, the green space there, if we could maybe zoom in on it, is that, I mean, that's sort of what we're talking about, Tom, isn't it? I mean, you know, I guess you could call it a park, there's no equipment, yeah, there.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah, this is...
A little pocket park, maybe, I mean, how many, what is, what's the size of that?
I'm happy to give you an example.
Okay.
That's what it could look like.
Yeah.
This is a comparable space in Grandview Commons, it would have some gathering space, lawn, accented with landscaping and benches, it wouldn't have a playground per se, but it's something that gives just an opportunity for us, and we've seen these parks be used for neighborhood gatherings, been there on Halloween, they had their fire pit out there, those kind of things, and it just offers additional small spaces within the context of the neighborhood that accent then, you know, three blocks from here is a 19-acre community park, so these serve different functions, they're, these are not the spaces you'd go to have a soccer game, but they're a place you could throw the ball with your family if you wanted to, or just meet your neighbors.
There's a park down the street, like you said, so I'm kind of satisfied with that. Then the other issue is, so there's these three, you know, I talked to Jay, there's Jay, I talked to Jay Hockney the past couple days, he's called me, and I'm reading through some of this, so I want to ask you some of these questions about his suggestions.
Sure.
So the net and the gross average for calculating housing units, it sounds like we're down to a difference now between, what, 121 versus 100, what are the numbers?
109, I believe, is what you mentioned.
109, most recent.
109 versus, so we're down to a difference of how many units, of 12 units? I mean, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, a couple things on that, and again, having, put on a different hat as a planner, you know, net and gross are calculations that help describe the character of the environment, but the challenge with them is that you can, depending on what you count and don't count, drastically change the outcomes without changing the character at all. In this case, if you said, well, everything except for Minong Lane was private, the net densities would be approaching the gross densities, but if you exclude the buffers and open space, which kind of run counter to trying to encourage development to have those, that number comes down. Now, as reported in Sonia's staff report to Plan Commission to this body, this falls below the gross density cap, so this isn't at the top of the density on the gross side, it's above the net density, if you excluded all the streets, all the open space, all the stormwater, and that gives a framework of reference. The issue as we look at this project is, the, the density is directly attributable to the affordability or the attainability of the project. So we talk about 12 units, won't move the needle at all when we're looking at traffic, it does make a sizable difference, whether that's 12 or 20, that makes a sizable difference to the ability to deliver attainable housing, in that if you took those units out of the equation without any subsidy, which we're not asking for any, any assistance, that would add between 15 and $20,000 to every price of every single house.
Size of lots increase, size of lots increase.
Correct. But you have, you have the same infrastructure to serve it, spread across fewer homes, same streets, less homes. So it does tie back to that attainability question, and the ability to deliver housing in that $300,000 range is directly attributable to the density that's being proposed, and so there kind of is, the challenge of consistency is, is the comprehensive plan is a multifaceted document, affordability, diversity, density, traffic, all those pieces get lumped together in that calculation of, of what the goals are for a community, and so that's why, as we put this project together, the density that's proposed is really a function of the ability to deliver that attainability.
Okay, and then, he's talking about number two here, potentially, and Tom and I talked about this today, too, a little bit, having a second entrance, where we had on, on the second entry?
We did talk about this at the Plan Commission, and actually added one slide, if I can get to the end here, again, this slide, to kind of explain how that works. Currently, this is the section of the William Ryan Homes project that is under construction, they are phasing to the south. Black Hawk Church, of course, is built here, will be opening soon, really functioning off of this entrance, one point in and out, until you get to the neighborhood connections to the east. This neighborhood will be comparable in that, Minong Lane will be constructed as part of Phase One from Seminole Highway all the way to our eastern limits. So as the William Ryan Homes plat comes south, which has, just based upon their market absorption, that will drive when that happens, but long-term, actually, in the short term, we expect that these roads will begin coming south, they already have their stormwater down here, for example.
Okay.
This street, Minong, would connect into their internal street, loop down to a secondary point east of the site. If you look at the sequencing of spacing here, you can kind of see how that Lacy Road driveway spacing works. We did look at, could you have an entrance here? The challenge being to bring out a street to the south begins to complicate the potential future design and movements of cars in that intersection, so that's why we deferred to an access that will be dedicated, that is dedicated, and will soon be constructed out to our east.
These are good, I mean, these are good questions. So then, thirdly, is the stormwater plan certification, we had, I think Dane County did this, and they're saying they would like to have another look at this, you know, more comprehensive look. I guess I could, what's that? Nothing? Oh, you want, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I can answer the question, if you, and then if you want staff to talk, that's fine, too. Typical process is, you know, as a developer's engineer, we create the stormwater management report, and then that is reviewed and approved by whatever staff, or outside consultants sometimes, a municipality is used, depending on their level of expertise. Typically, here in the city of Pittsburgh, and we just did this with Phoenix Project with our company, we had staff reviewed it some, and then also was passed on to the county, and they reviewed it, too, so it ended up through two layers of review for that process, and this is going to be, find that same full, full rendition of going through that process also, and I have no problems with that, that's just typical of way of doing business.
I don't have a whole lot to add on that, I think it's summarized appropriately, city staff reviews it as well as Dane County, and the applicants will be required to meet all of the ordinance regulations for stormwater in order to get an erosion control stormwater management permit, approval of their stormwater management report, and they also need to meet all of the requirements in the neighborhood plan, for example.
So, because we've had some problems with flooding, as you know, here in recent years, months, whatever, past few summers, so you're confident here that this is, they got a good plan, we're in good shape?
Yeah, and I, I can't comment on that as the planner, but we do have stormwater engineers on staff that will be reviewing that, and it's a required condition as listed in the preliminary plat and the GIP, that they comply with those conditions, otherwise they won't receive their permits.
Okay.
And, and I could add to that, Dane County's probably the strictest county in the state when it comes to stormwater regulations and...
I believe it.
...to our lakes, and so when they review these documents, they go through them with a fine-tooth comb. I'd also like to add that through the TIF that was developed in close proximity to this neighborhood for the Sub-Zero, Promega projects, et cetera, we are doing a stormwater analysis study that's going to not only look into the area where those projects sit, but this whole vicinity of the watershed and how we can make it better, so we're doing above and beyond what we would do in a normal neighborhood.
Dorothy?
Well, the map is still up, they talked a little bit about accessing Lacy Road, going south on that road, but if they go north on that road, I'm presuming they can also connect out to Seminole Highway, just to the north of Black Hawk Church, so there is an act, a second, secondary access to Seminole Highway as well?
Tom?
As you can tell, this is in Janelle's and my, well, I'll talk to him myself, this is in my district along with Janelle, and, you know, I'm gonna cover the three strikes that are out there. One was stormwater, we did. You answered my question, the county, and they pay for it. Two was the number of units that, I still have a question about. Three is traffic. Now I'm gonna talk about number three. Lacy Road, Seminole Highway, well, let me back up. With the help of you all, we moved that traffic light up for the public, Lacy Road at Seminole Highway, it's been moved up a couple of years. I don't, don't ask me if it's a roundabout or a stoplight, because I don't think we know, but that was moved up, okay? Take it from a guy who worked traffic for a long time in the city. It's not getting better, it's getting worse. I'm real concerned about the one-way out. You all voted on another plot, on Fish Ash Road, there wasn't a one, there's only one way out, so you voted against it. We didn't have another way out. This development, I'm not telling you to vote against it, I'm not, because we do have another way out, but we don't have it now. It's what the developer already described. So all the traffic is gonna funnel onto Seminole Highway. Until we get that other way out, onto Lacy Road, and if you go by the Dunn House, you won't know what I'm talking about, if you go by the White House on Lacy Road, you'll know they're moving gravel, they're moving retaining pond, right in that area is where the road's coming out. I'm real concerned about putting all these houses in with the one-way out, not to mention, and I'm not a firefighter, that... I wasn't gonna do this, but I am today. If there's a bad crash right here at this intersection, or there's, something happens to one of these humans right in here, these people are liable. They can't get out. So... I want to make amendment that... Give me a number, 60 homes are built, but not the whole plot.
Until there's a second access point.
You know, 60 of them, until we get the other way out. In other words, it's phased in maybe over a couple of years? The first thing I'm gonna hear, and first thing I'm gonna hear from a few people are, well, there's other areas in the city that, wait a minute, they're one-way out, wait a minute, this is a brand-new development, I think that's different. So what I'm proposing is it doesn't all get built at once, I'm gonna say 121 units do they have, I might be wrong, 121, let's do 60, and then, as the road comes in, finish it. I'm not trying to stall it, I'm trying to have it safe. I'm trying, you got a whole lot of tra, multiply that traffic from that subdivision onto Seminole Highway, start multiplying it, I think you'll be surprised. So my amendment, if I get a second, is just half, 60 of it, I'm, I just use a number, to do half of it, and then phase in the other half when the other road gets built, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, so the motion is to allow 60 units to be built until the second exit is connected to Lacy Road, this is what I'm hearing, right?
Say it again.
So, to allow 60 units to be built until the Minong Lane connects all the way through to Lacy Road, okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, same by Dan, all right, so we can discuss this piece, if anyone would like to discuss this further, Sarah?
Sorry, I agree with Dan, I'd like to...
Oh, no, you, you go first.
Thank you.
I just, I was curious, looking at...
Ask for feedback.
I'm sorry, just looking at Uptown Crossing, I know that those houses were kind of built in phases, it seemed like naturally, but I didn't know if that kind of is the standard process, or, yeah, sorry.
Yes, to clarify, this, this certainly will be built in phases, we anticipate three to four phases, depending on market acceptance, spanning over multiple years. The challenge with the wording isn't that we're worried about a secondary access point, but it's something that we can't control to our east. Developers are what they are, sometimes streets don't get built in time, I guess one question to the body would be, it be, would it be acceptable that we look at a 60-unit, unless a secondary access point is delivered, for emergency access? It's a little bit different, the reason I bring it up is a situation we looked at in Middleton, of a comparable project that had one way in, one way out by geography, except we were able to deliver an emergency fire access as a secondary point of entrance to make sure that there was, in the event, as you said, if there was an, if there was an accident in this intersection, it could be addressed and accessed from a secondary point. What comes to mind is the possibility, we do have a sidewalk connection here to work with the fire department, to potentially have that be built out as a fire access in a temporary sense, such that when Minong Lane gets extended... in a temporary sense, such that when Minong Lane gets extended, that temporary access could be removed. In the case in Middleton, we had knock-down gates put in, so it really is only for fire access, but not necessarily a second vehicular access. So that that could be delivered. The challenge, as I said, is just because we don't control when Minong will be extended to our east. We'll take the road all the way to the eastern boundary as our, part of our first phase, but we don't have any rights to force that street to be extended or drive their phasing.
Yeah, I think that accommodates what we're trying to accomplish, Tom.
Tom, you're
No, I'm with you, I'm with you. The idea wasn't to worry about totally fire, it's also the traffic you're creating with all these homes. I'm with you, I understand what you're saying. Correct me if I'm wrong, when I started, I didn't say it was just for fire. That's not where I was going. But if we phase all this in at once, you take two vehicles at every home, take three, because the kids drive, and start calculating all this, and putting it on on Seminole Highway, I know it won't, I know, in your defense, I know it won't all at once, but the way it's presented right now, we only have one way out, and there's a whole lot of traffic is going to come to this, to this street. And it's interesting when we talk about, and you can think about it, the bar on Seminole Highway that's coming, the church that's coming, the other places, they have other exits.
Further, Dorothy?
I'm having to remember. Do we know among all the various staff what the phasing is like? And it, every time I drive by, there's a lot more houses there. I'm going to guess that that's going to end up being largely built out by the time these guys get real deep into theirs.
It's all market-driven. I wouldn't venture to guess. But you're right, that is being built out quickly. I think to the point of the other development that has been brought up is that there is other access points for Sub-Zero, the developments that are going on, Sub-Zero Parkway. They can, they don't have to use Seminole, so that's not necessarily totally impacting Seminole. That traffic can go Sub-Zero to Commerce or around a different direction. But I think we're going to see a lot of this traffic be alleviated once we see Verona Road completed and Wayland completed. There's a lot of variables out there that don't involve any of these developments.
And continuing? It was said earlier that utilities are already in for that roadway? Is there a reason why we couldn't work something out with that developer to get that roadway built before they start doing the actual, that phase?
That would be up to that developer. There's obviously a cost that they bear, and they usually like to be built up to a point so where they're selling lots, they're not building any unnecessary roads. It's a question that can be asked, though.
I think it'd be worth, a discussion worth having.
Further questions, comments? Seeing none. All right, so first it would be to vote on Tom's motion of, I guess, allowing 60 units until that secondary access point through Minong down to Lacy is completed. So we might as well do a roll call.
Alder Barr?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Clouder?
Aye.
Alder Crowsey?
No.
Alder Rice?
I recuse myself.
Alder Schroeder?
No.
Alder Scott?
No.
No.
Was that a tie?
It was 3-3.
You voted
No.
Yep. So back to the original motion, I would like further discussion at all? Sarah?
Just the compromise that they had offered, is that something that we could add to the amendment of adding the fire?
We can do another amendment with that.
I think that that made a lot of sense from a safety perspective, that could, could I add an amendment to include that temporary access point for safety?
Yeah, so so your amendment would be, do you want to restate your amendment, then?
I'd make an amendment to add the, I'm sorry, I don't have the nomenclature, the temporary access point.
Those that allow the 60 units with, or saying, or the whole thing, but they need to have the secondary fire access?
Yes, the secondary access point.
By our fire chief.
Like, I mean, that, I think you would even recommend, or had offered as a, an option?
Yep.
Okay, so
Does it have to include the 60 units? I'm sorry, is that kind of, like?
No, I don't, I don't think so.
Yes, include a safety, secondary fire access.
Okay, so if I understand the right, your amendment is to essentially require the secondary fire access point until Minong connects down to Lacy Road. No restrictions on how many they can build at any one time, but we do have immediately essentially that fire access point?
Yes, thank you.
All right, so that's the spirit of the motion. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
All right, saying by Dorothy. Is there further discussion on this amendment? Tom?
Yeah, this is definitely taking us away in a different direction. You're still getting all the traffic. You're going to pound this road. I'm going to say it. For the residents in my district, we're getting pounded. Darn it, we're getting pounded. Seminole Highway's getting pounded, Lacy Road's getting pounded, Wayland Road's getting pounded. And if you all think that everybody's going to shift after Verona Road gets open, think again. We're getting pounded. And schools opening, go look at the traffic. I'm in a district that's unbelievable. Tomorrow, probably at the Public Works, they'll close another road because we want to put down asphalt. Unbelievable, unbelievable. We're getting pounded out here. And I guess no one wants to talk about it, and I will. I will. We're coming to a gridlock out here. Multiply those homes with the number of vehicles, and those homes will probably, I don't know what the administrator was talking about, they could sell very quick because of the price, because of the area, because of Pittsburgh. These could go real quick. And District Four, welcome to District Four. Because you got it. Oh, sure, we're going to knock down now to get the fire truck in? That's not where I'm going. I got news for you, if the fire truck wants to get in, it can get in. I don't care if they have to go through any fence. To save a life, they'll get in. Multiply the cars, multiply what you got here. Dorothy, you travel it. You're telling me you travel it, great. You got to look at all these cars and wonder. Unbelievable, this is unbelievable. And we don't think the market will drive it. Yeah, the market's going to drive this thing, right to the top. Right to the top. You think Fish Ashery Road's bad? I got a road bad, they're all bad in the 4th District. And nobody wants to help here. So I'm, you know what, I'm going to say it. Come on aboard, Janelle. We got a mess.
All right, Dorothy?
The compare and contrast that I have is that my neighborhood has two major access points. One is Verona Road, the other is Seminole Highway to the north up toward the Belt Line. Talk about a lot of traffic. We had to work it out. The first, I started attending Verona Road construction meetings wondering what year I should plan on selling my house and get out, because it was going to be nuts. When people talked me into running for office nine, 10, whatever years ago it was now, one of my major talking points in talking to neighbors is I intend to get a traffic light at Seminole Highway. We didn't even have that light there. We got it as part of Verona Road, and a lot of that was because I talked to all the neighbors, and then I went and talked to DOT, and I made sure we were going to be able to get out of our neighborhood. Traffic down here isn't the comparable isn't. It just isn't. Yeah, there's a lot. But it doesn't have the tight neighborhoods with all the really, really huge, I mean, all the traffic that comes from here is headed north, okay? Comes past my house. So it's not as though it's the worst place in the city to be able to drive.
Further?
Sarah?
Oh, sorry, Sarah.
Sorry, I just, Tom, I do not mean to discount the traffic at all. I do drive Lacy Road daily. It's bad, it's horrible. You're completely right, it's backed up to the school. It's awful. But I do, I hope I'm not being optimistic, but I do know that we do have a lot of traffic that right now is funneling to Lacy Road. So I'm hopeful that it will get better with the Fitch-Rona roundabout, Verona Road. There's just a lot of problems where, when I have talked to people, they are using Lacy now just because it's their own, the only way that they can actually get to work. So I don't mean to discount it at all. It's awful, I completely agree. I'm hopeful that it gets better. I just, I do think that at least this would address, address safety concerns. And when additional exits were allowed, hopefully combined with the fact that construction would be over in arteries that lead to Lacy Road and the additional access points, hopefully it's better. But I do not mean to discount it at all. I completely agree that traffic is, it's horrible right now.
Anyone else?
I think we've got some timing
Go ahead.
I think we've got some timing challenges. I think everybody's aware of what's going on at that intersection, you know, as you drive through there. We need to also take a look at a future state. And I think that's just as much concern is
Janelle, I don't want to interrupt you, but if you're accusing yourself, you're not supposed to talk at all. Sorry. You can abstain, but if you're accusing yourself, you're not supposed to talk, sorry.
Okay, no worries.
Tom?
The other thing you got to remember that, you know, with the Verona Road situation, it doesn't mean people are going to change their habits. If they like Lacy Road and Fitch-Rona, they're going to use it. Do you think they're going to travel the Belt Line to Nakoma and then go to Madison? They're going to come the back way. Let me give you an example about traffic. Let me give you just one. Never done this before. So I'm on patrol on Fish Ashery Road, and I stop a car in the mobile station. And he goes down Fish Ashery, cuts through the mobile and comes out on Post Road. And I said, what's this all about? And you know what he told me? He wanted to not stop at the stop sign or the light. So he cuts through the, he cuts through the mobile station and goes out on the other street. And I'm such a believer, we have some people in the city that think I should sell my 150 and get on a bike. But it doesn't work that way. You can't tell people what to drive. You can't tell people how to go. You can't do it. They're going to drive and go the way they want to. So Sarah, all I'm telling you is, they may not change. That's all I'm saying. They may not change. And I think these lots are going to go like hotcakes. You probably want to put that on a plaque on, out in the greenway. But the fact is, I think they're going to sell quick. Because they're affordable. They're in demand. People younger than me are making better salaries. And they're going to sell. So you're going to deal with this traffic. And I really, in my heart, I don't think anyone's listening. A lot of people will go the same way. They've traveled this way for three or four months, and you think all of a sudden they're just going to say, oh, I'll go back to my old way. I don't know. But I doubt it. So I'm just sorry my amendment didn't pass, because this could get out of sight.
All right, Dan?
Okay, so let me just weigh in here. I did vote with you on your amendment. But I want to keep things in perspective. So this whole thing, we're sort of at the end of a very long journey. I think this started back Memorial Day weekend of 2018 when we first put our amendment in. And I had a discussion with the proponents of higher, much higher density in this area. And the discussion was, look, if you come forward with something that complies with medium density, you know, we'll approve it. And I think that that was my message to Chris Ellers at the time, and to others who were interested in this, to proponents and to neighbors. And we're at medium density now. The amendment passed, elections happened, and composition of the planning commission, the council changed, and so it got passed. But we told them that, we did tell them that. Now, in addition to that, I think Jay and Tom have come forward with some very good points. A lot of them, I think we've gone through, they've been addressed. I think Sarah has a nice amendment, it's not perfect, I understand. I was with you on looking to control traffic a little more. But, you know, sometimes you can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. We told them medium density, we're at medium density right now. And that's, you know, I got to keep my word on that, in terms of this whole thing. And so we can go through and we can talk about green space, they got green space, they got to park down the street. We can go through and talk about stormwater. She's, I think Sonya did a nice job addressing the stormwater. We love our staff. They do a great job for us, and they're going to review it. There won't be any permits issued so long as you don't have the stormwater. So I think we're sort of at a point, you know, this has gone on for 18 months, not, well, sorry, a year and three months. It's, you know, and we've been there for the residents to address their concerns. I think the Sarah amendment, you know, does a lot in terms of safety, in terms of getting our professional safety services into this neighborhood. There will be a second entrance eventually, certainly. And so I kind of am thinking we're getting to the time where we kind of, you know, we got to be fair and move on.
All right, any further comments at all? Dorothy?
I've just got one quick question. As construction is going on for you guys, is there a sense of which way construction traffic would be coming from? And my ultimate question is whether we should allow that bottom corner access on Lacy Road to be used as construction access, or if we should deny the opportunity to use that?
If I could speak to that, I would appreciate it. I guess we would see, if we're doing a secondary access to Lacy as a temporary for fire protection, we would not want to use that as construction access. I think that would be an emergency situation that only would be that situation. The construction traffic, obviously, will come off of Seminole onto Minong. As to where they come from, that really depends on where the resource that is coming to the site is coming from.
Okay, my thinking was just if a lot of the construction traffic would be coming from the east on Lacy, they could avoid that intersection, which everyone is saying is such a huge problem, if they accessed the site there.
I mean, we can, we can look at that a little bit further, that might be something for a discussion at a final plat kind of time, but at this point, I would say no. And we can have those follow-up detailed conversations a little bit further down the road. But I'll take it under advisement and think about it, but I, right now, I would say no.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? All right, seeing none. First, we have to vote on Sarah's amendment, and that is to require the secondary fire access. So an "I" would say that you do want to have that as a condition? Go ahead. Roll call.
Alder Barr?
Aye.
Alder Strossman?
No.
Alder Clouter?
No.
Alder Crowsey?
Aye.
Alder Rice?
Recused.
Alder Schroder?
Aye.
Alder Scott?
Aye.
Four to two.
All right, so that passes. So then we're back to the original, I guess, motion, which is through the requirement now of the fire access. Is there any further discussion on the original motion? Then seeing none, why don't we do a roll call on the final amendment? So an "I" is voting for this with now the added secondary fire access.
Alder Barr?
Aye.
Alder Strossman?
No.
Alder Clouter?
No.
Alder Crowsey?
Aye.
Rice with Cruz. Alder Schroder?
Aye.
Alder Scott?
Aye.
Four to two.
All right, so that passes. Then going on to number eight, which is also related to this. Tom, do you want to do a motion for this?
Mayor, do you have it in front of you?
I do. I don't think I can make motions.
If you... I can read it. It's up on the screen there, Tom. Number eight. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. 2019-031, RZ 2308-19, approving request by Brian Munson of Vanderwollen Associates Agents for Fitchburg Campus Two LL, see to rezone Lot One, CSM 8023 from RR Rural Residential Zoning District to PDD GIP Plan Development District, General Developmentation Plan, Zoning District Plan Development, Plan Commission. And we did approve, I believe.
And are you making a motion to approve?
That's a motion.
I'll second.
All right, singing by Dorothy. And I don't know if Dan or Brian, if you want to say anything further at all, if you want to say anything further from staff perspective at all. So this is the PDD component of the same project.
Right. Yeah, this is just the zoning component of the same project.
Okay. Tom, did you want to speak again on this piece?
I'll just say one.
Sure, yep. Go ahead.
And I'll be quick on this, you know, all the same information I gave on the last one. The one thing that was a little bit different is I talked to Jeremy Belusek yesterday, who's with Dayton County. He's in charge of that, overseeing the water permits. He says, "You really got to call attention to us about these, otherwise we don't give it the kind of scrutiny that we should have." So, you know, I would encourage that, make sure that the scrutiny is there on the numbers and whatnot because we don't want any, you know, really problems down the road because it really wasn't calculated right, or really looked at and scrutinized.
Great, all right, thank you. Jay, did you want to speak some more to you?
Yes, briefly, thank you. Given the vote a moment ago, which is disappointing for people who are very concerned about the traffic and the timeline unknown for the connection to the adjacent William Ryan neighborhood, I'd again like to suggest that for this, for the purposes of track... Looking into the timeline for that and to see how long it would take and what it would take to get that road installed, to avoid the issues that we just got done discussing, that this matter be tabled for two weeks so that somebody can look into and contact William Ryan to find out what their plans are. Because if their plans are basically, "Well, we're thinking about it, but maybe if somebody could help us this or help us that or whatever, maybe we could get that done a lot faster than they're really talking about it now and this problem could be solved." Otherwise, there's just going to be a huge problem here. And the other thing that's interesting to remember is that even though some of the load of the reconstruction of the Belt, of Verona Road and PD is now going through these areas, when that's gone, there's going to be at least 1,000 cars a day generated both ways by all the projects that are under construction in the area right now that have already been approved. And so what you're going to have is, yeah, some of that traffic's going to go in another direction, but you're going to have all these additional cars generated by all these things that are still not open but are basically going to be there. So again, I hope you would vote to delay this for two weeks to check with William Ryan to find out what their schedule is going to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Reed, I just want to check, you didn't list that you wanted to talk on this one. I just want to make sure, give you an opportunity. No, okay. And all the comments that I wrote earlier were for both of these items. I can read them all again if you'd like, but it feels like overkill. And then Kim Thorson did register specifically for this and registering opposition of the above matter. She lives in Fitchburg. All right, so further questions or comments on this item, number eight? Anything further, Tom?
Yeah, I'm... We've gone this far. I'm going to move to table this until, just with the speaker said, until we find out. Maybe we will have some information about another road out, which will help us. I don't know the answer to that either. I don't. To talk to the other person to see if we can... Maybe the timeline is better than we thought. I don't know. But at this point, I'm going to be consistent on my thought on traffic. And the gentleman just spoke with all the traffic. That's a huge amount of traffic.
So did I hear a motion to postpone for two weeks?
Just for two weeks. Let's get it back here.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
All right, singing by Dan Barr. Do you want to like to speak to the...
Well, let me...
Do you want to speak more to it? Go ahead.
Could we have had... Let me just ask you a question on that. Maybe you know something I don't. Do you know anything about this other road that maybe they shared with you or anything that we don't know?
On the William Ryan subdivision?
Yeah.
I really don't know any details on the phasing of that plat.
That's fair. No, that's fair. I may ask, could you make contact with them and just maybe get an answer back to us two weeks? That's all I'm saying. No.
Any other comments or questions on this motion to postpone for two weeks? Sarah?
Just out of curiosity, does this delay anything with the developers or can I assume that this is...
I think we can ask them.
And that's, yeah.
How it affects their timeline?
I mean, obviously, it's disappointing to have that delay. I mean, I don't think, if I'm being asked that question as a developer's responsibility on the other way around, I'm not going to give you a commitment one way or the other until I know for sure I'm going to go through. So yes, we, you know, we can have conversations with William Ryan. That's not an issue. We would openly do that, but I don't expect them to say, "Yeah, we're going to do this by January 1st, 2020," or "January 1st, 2021." They're not... They're not going to do that, in my opinion. But obviously, we can have the conversation. I don't know, you want to add on to that, Brian?
Yeah, I think I would like, if I could. You know, again, this is the first step of a... It's a preliminary plat. We have multiple steps that are going to happen between now and 20... And when we break ground in 2020, we'll be back in front of this body prior to then. And I would think that the delay now doesn't necessarily give us any more information that we may have when the final plat is back in front of you. I would request that maybe that's a conversation we could have between now and the filing of a final plat and bring that information back to you because approval of preliminary plat doesn't let us build anything. We will have to come back to this body for multiple steps and multiple approvals before we move to the point where we're talking about building infrastructure in support of this project. So there is time in that process to allow those conversations to have. We will certainly reach out to William Ryan Homes and see if there's an opportunity to where we can coordinate the delivery of that access. But again, not having any window into their thought process, you know, two weeks doesn't necessarily give us that time to have that information, but from the lens of coming back with a final plat, having had a conversation, we may be able to come to some agreements prior to then. But even in the case that it doesn't, I think the amendment that was offered addresses that issue. And so this will be a multi-phase project. This will occur over multiple years. A lot of infrastructure will go in, not just in this project, but we anticipate around this project. And that includes the discussions that the city's having about improvements to Lacy and improvements to Seminole because those are two-lane rural roads right now. That's not the future. And I think your planning process has identified that. And that is the mechanism that will help address some of those regional transportation issues in the long run. But again, that's something that happens like this project and like every project over the course of many years.
All right, so first we would vote on the motion to postpone for two weeks. We might as well do a roll call just to make sure.
Alder Barr?
Aye.
Alder Strossman?
Aye.
Alder Clouter?
Aye.
Alder Crowsey?
No.
Alder Rice?
Recused.
Alder Schroder?
Aye.
Alder Scott?
No.
Four to two, motion carried.
All right, so it will be postponed for two weeks, so we'll see that at the next meeting. All right, moving forward then, anything else on the planning commission that you want to speak to, Tom?
I don't think there's anything that...
No. All right, Public Works. I don't know if Dan or Ann wants to...
You want to do it, Ann?
Do these?
I can go.
She was at the last meeting. I was not present a week ago.
I'll move to approve ordinance 2119-19, discontinuation of construction and demolition, refuse recycling.
Oh, is there... Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right. And what did Public Works do?
We voted yes.
All right, what did RCC do?
RCC voted to table, and if you wouldn't mind if I said a little bit?
Just one second.
Okay.
What did Finance do?
Passed.
Passed it, okay. And so Sarah, do you want to speak to RCC?
Yes, RCC did vote to table this. Not that they don't agree with removing the ordinance, but just that they were... They didn't agree with the verbiage within the removal of the ordinance, just that a lot of time and effort was put into kind of constructing this CND recycling program and that it was built to educate and kind of encourage contractors to recycle. And it was listed as being ineffective. And from the RCC's perspective, it wasn't ineffective, it just kind of outlived its time and that the staff stopped enforcing it. So definitely on board with removing the ordinance, but just wanted to make it clear that it was not necessarily ineffective, but just no longer being enforced.
All right. Further questions at all or comments? Dorothy?
I was just going to commend Ann for not tripping over the typo in that line. It says reuse rather than refuse.
Excellent. All right, good job, Ann. Anything further? All right, then seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? All right, that is approved. Next one in?
I move to approve ordinance 2019-0-29, amending the building permit ordinance, section 24-14 of chapter 24 of Fitchburg General Code of Ordinances.
Is there a second?
Second.
Singing by Dan, what did Public Works do?
We passed.
All right, and planning commission? I know they passed as well. All right, do you want to speak to what this is at all? This is, I think, what we did the public hearing on, didn't we? Yep. So this is the... That was a while ago. You're welcome. Thank you.
I can speak to this one briefly. So as many of you are probably aware, there was a legislative bill on the state level called the Developers Bill of Rights. You might have heard of it. There are a number of changes. A number of them affect the way that we administer construction and new subdivision improvements. So in this instance, previous to this state law change, what we as a municipality required before we would issue any building permits was for the developer to complete the construction of all public improvements and for those improvements to be accepted by the city formally. And that requirement was in part because it was meant to protect the city essentially from a situation where lots are divided, sold, construction begins, and the streets aren't finished or there's a problem with the streets and it's not accepted and then the developer, for whatever reason, goes under and the city has a problem. So certainly, it would be our preference to continue, I think from a staff perspective, to do things that way. Developers obviously saw it very differently. Regardless of our opinion on how we'd like to do it, at this point, we no longer can because the state law changed. And so the change in the state law says that we have to issue what we call the early start permits, permits for foundation only, under certain set of circumstances, as well as full building permits once the developer meets the substantial completion standard, which is defined in the statute. So in this instance, we don't have a whole lot of wiggle room, so what we have instead is an ordinance that incorporates this statutory change. Unfortunately, it's not optional for us. We have to do it. But we also provided for some rules and some requirements for developers to meet before we issue those permits. And along those requirements are that the streets, for early start permits, that the streets be labeled so that there are actual signs so that if there's an emergency, emergency vehicles can access the streets and know which street they're on and what the address that may be there. It prevents any material stockpiling in the easement areas. I mean, I can go through all of it, but it's really, the language is in front of you. But essentially, all of the public safety improvements that we... Public safety requirements that we can, that we could think of, that as a staff, we came up with, we've incorporated those in this. So again, this is driven by state law change. We're trying to facilitate development to the extent possible while continuing to make sure that it is safe for the residents of the city and the city as a whole, so.
All right, so it's really just doing what state statute is telling us we have to do.
That's correct.
All right.
Was there an...
Tom?
Was there any increases as far as money?
This has nothing to do with money at all. Although, I guess the only thing I would say is we will also require the developer to pay all their fees before we issue permits. So I mean, that's the... Yes, that's a financial component, but this isn't really a financial bill. It is for developers because they say, "Hey, we want to be able to start building before we finish," but...
All right, anything further? All right, then I will say, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? All right, that is approved. Number three, Ann?
I'll move to approve resolution number R-139-19, resolution authorizing strand contract amendment number two for my key road design.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, did Public Works approve?
Yes.
And did Finance approve?
Yes.
All right, do you want to speak to what this is? Ann, do you want to talk about this or do you want staff or someone else to speak to it? We do need a two-thirds vote on this one. I know that.
I think I can tell you what it is.
All right, go ahead.
So we're having to update the... We amended the design. The state DOT made new requirements that we had to meet. There is no cost... There's no additional cost to the city. So we talked about this in Finance.
All right.
There's no new cost for the city.
Okay. All right, that's good. Any further questions or comments at all? All right, then all in favor can say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? All right, that's unanimous, which is two-thirds. Excellent. Number four?
Okay, I'll move to approve resolution R-145-19, resolution to authorize rejection of the Burn Pond bid.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, and did Public Works approve?
Yes.
Did Finance?
Yes.
All right, do you want to speak to what this is? Or maybe I'm.
I can tell you that, too.
Anne?
Well, the bid came in three times as much as what we had budgeted for, so we're not taking that.
And, um, just to add to that, uh, staff has already started the process of rebidding with the assumption that the bids would be rejected by this body.
It's a good assumption, but it's three times as much.
I think also they were going to revisit some of the things they were asking for, change some of the parameters a bit to get the bids down.
Uh, I thi- I think that's in reference to the Fitch Atrey Road project.
Oh, okay, wrong one.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, anything else? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed name? All right, that one's approved, and one more.
Okay, I move to approve resolution R dash one forty-seven dash nineteen, authorizing the water utility to file a simplified rate increase application with the Public Service Commission of Wisconsin.
All right, is there a second? Second, anyone?
I'll second.
All right, second by Dorothy, did Public Works approve?
Yes.
Did Finance?
Yeah, two to one.
Okay. All right, do you want to speak to what this is? Or someone want to speak to it?
Patty, want to talk about that?
Misty? All right.
I can, I can tell you if you'd like.
Oh, Misty's on her way up.
Yeah.
We'd rather listen to her anyway than you more, just kidding, just kidding.
I talk really fast, so don't worry. Uh, so anytime we want to do anything with our water utility rates, we have to go through the PSC. Uh, they have two processes, one is a much more elaborate full rate case process. What we are proposing to get approval for is a simplified rate case. Uh, what that is, is it's a three percent increase in our rates, uh, that's a relatively easy process to go through. At the end of every year, we look at our past year's results and determine if we had enough money in order to pay for all of the expenses. This increase of three percent still will not have us hit our authorized rate of return, um, but it is a relatively easy process. We didn't want to do the whole kit and caboodle yet because we have so many capital projects coming forward in the next couple of years. We thought that this would be a better approach. And then the last time we did a rate increase was in two thousand sixteen. So if you figure it's three years later, a three percent increase really is kind of one percent per year, and for the average household, works out to be about five dollars a year.
All right, further questions on this at all? Comments? Anything? Seeing none, then all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed name?
Nay.
All right, I hear one nay there. All right, that passes. Anything else in Public Works you want to talk about?
Thanks, Dan, for filling in, um, at the previous meeting. I'm sorry I missed, but I'm sure you did fine. Sounds like you had issues.
All right, then we'll go move on to Parks Commission.
We didn't meet, but our next meeting is September fifth at seven PM.
All right, Library Board?
Our next meeting is Wednesday, September eighteenth at five thirty at the library.
All right, Commission on Aging, well?
Next meeting, um, September twelfth at eight thirty in the morning here.
All right, RCC?
Yes, uh, RCC, we did meet, we had a very active meeting, um, and we'll be having a Plastic Planet viewing upcoming at the library. I was just looking at September eighteenth, I believe, um, but I know that we posted on the Facebook pages that, so please watch for that. It's a really interesting film about how plastic is unfortunately really infiltrating our water supply. And then, um, we did have, uh, an expert come in and review our kind of, our energy usage, and we have the Renewable Resources Resolution, R fifty dash oh nine, signed by Doyle in two thousand nine, that, um, has a goal of generating twenty-five percent of electricity by twenty twenty-five, the twenty-five twenty-five rule. And our expert reviewed saying that, uh, right now, we had a previous Pittsburgh Star article that said it was twenty, we were at twenty-one percent. That was unfortunately not looking at things from a whole perspective. Uh, we're actually lower than that as it is right now, so it's just something that the RCC continues to work towards to have more, um, renewable resources by twenty twenty-five. So just an area of interest, and if you're interested, please review the video that we had a really in-depth conversation about it.
All right, thank you, Transportation, oh, yeah, go ahead.
I just had one question. You talked a month or two ago about, uh, having a tour of the recycling facility. Is that coming together?
It did occur. Um, the, I'm trying to think, Claudia had arranged a recycling facility. Um, we can go out there whenever, so we did arrange a group from the RCC, but when we met with them, you can, you can go out, uh, I'm sorry, I know the Pelletary representatives are here tonight, so, but the tour was fantastic, uh, everyone learned a lot. Uh, they have videos, you can really see as to how they do sort things, that I would strongly recommend it, um, but that they do offer tours. I, I know, I'm sorry to look at you, Claudia, but I think Claudia could kind of help us set, uh, us up with the contacts specifically, um, but yeah, it was, it was a really interesting tour. I didn't go on it this time, I'd gone on it previously, and I would without a doubt recommend it.
All right, any other questions? All right, seeing none, Transportation Transit?
No report.
All right, uh, SEDA, I know they had a meeting, I know Anne's gonna, uh, do their res- this, um, resolution though, since Julia's not here, and I don't believe that Shannon was able to make that. It was a short notice for you. Anne, do you want to do the resolution?
Okay, um, I'll move to approve resolution, uh, ordinance number two zero one nine dash oh dash two-three, establishing a Pittsburgh Housing Advisory Committee by amending chapter six, creating article five, division one, section six, dash four eighty-two, six, dash four eighty-three.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, does anyone know, did SEDA approve, I'm pretty, I think they did. SEDA approved, and did Finance approve?
Amended.
We amended.
Approved amended, as amended. Oh, all right, so does someone on Finance want to speak to that?
Misty, you have any language or no?
I, I believe I can recall it off the top of my head. Basically, the, uh, composition of the committee would be, um, would be six members at, uh, at large. Um, it would be two, I mean, yeah, two Alders, one Alder. Seven members at large, one Alder and one member of SEDA, uh, is the amended version. The original version had two members of SEDA with one Alder.
And the chair and the vice chair will be chosen by the committee itself, not by SEDA.
Okay, so it was presented as nine, it's now seven, there's one less?
No, there's still nine, there's seven members at large.
Oh, okay.
One member from the council, one member from SEDA.
I see, all right. And so I guess the motion wasn't as amended, so we're gonna have to do a motion to amend?
Yeah.
If so, someone of Finance wants to do that, um, or you can just.
So moved.
All right, so is there a second?
Second.
All right, second by Janelle, um, further discussion on the makeup changing from two Alders to one, and then I think it's one more.
But we were at one Alder, we were at one.
Oh, sorry, from SEDA, to one person from SEDA, to.
I'm happy to.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, um, I think this more reflects how our other committees stack up in particular. Um, you know, I'd like to see the council, um, you know, we get recommendations, a lot of times, sometimes we feel obliged to take the rec- I don't, but some people do, feel obliged to take recommendations from committees or commissions, or, or study groups, or consultants, whatever it might be. Um, and so I'd like to ensure that the council is driving the train, um, and that, that the, you know, we have people that, that are sort of dictated not so much by SEDA, but rather by the council, by the mayor, by the elected officials, um, so that they can reflect the views of our citizens coming from our elected officials who are elected by the public. It's a reason for my change, the change. I think SEDA, having them choose a chair and a vice chair, and having two members of SEDA and one member of the council, it sounds like a SEDA-driven process. I think SEDA should participate, and they'll take recommendations from this, this group, and, and they can make whatever recommendation they want. Um, and ultimately, the council will have the say anyway, but, you know, I'd like to see the, the process move forward in that fashion.
All right, Pat, did you want to add something to that?
Yeah, just to clarify, and I'm, again, I'm, whatever this body decides in terms of composition is fine, but the reason, uh, that it was SEDA-heavy, um, in representation is that SEDA by state statute serves as the housing authority for the city of Pittsburgh. This is a housing committee. And that was the premise behind, uh, the mayor's appointments and the staff recommendation.
Yeah. You guys all, sorry.
Can I go to Dorothy first?
Sure can.
All right, Dorothy?
Another, um, similar cookie.
Similar cookie?
An- another similar point to what Pat was saying is that many of the members at SEDA participated on the housing meetings that we had in developing the housing plan, and they're already very familiar with the housing plan. So they're coming in with a lot of a leg up to help get the committee started.
And Dan?
Yes, I, I'm familiar with the housing plan, too, and I voted against it because I thought it was not the greatest plan, um, and I, and I just haven't been happy with what's come out of that committee in terms of, of what they've recommended. And I'd like to see more council-driven discussion, I'd like to see something looked at. I don't think the chair and the vice chair should be picked by SEDA. I don't think that's necessarily appropriate, if anything, it should be the mayor, um, that appoints them, or the committee itself, that's how, I've never heard of another committee picking a committees or subcommittees chair and vice chair, that's just silly, or that they be members of SEDA, that's even sillier. Um, no, I, I think we, we should move away. SEDA can have some input, but, you know, it seems like in the past, well, SEDA wants this, SEDA says that, that's great, and I do, they do great work, don't get me wrong, not dissing them. They're a fantastic group, but, you know, we, we, we need to maybe balance it out a bit, and so that's a reason for my amendment.
Further comments at all?
Just for the sake of clarity, if we could just have clarification, uh, what, the, what language you're asking to strike, just so that one, if, if it passes, we know what to send them Unicode.
Oh, sure. Okay, so under composition, it says the Housing Advisory Committee will be made up of nine members as follow, one older person will keep, two Community Economic Development Authority members, and we'd go with one, um, from its membership, who will serve as chair and vice chair, they won't, that's gone, um, and six citizens members that stays. And then instead of, I think we're gonna go with one ad hoc member as opposed to a SEDA member, as opposed to two SEDA members, we'd have one ad hoc member, a person from, could potentially be from outside of the community and offer expertise.
All right, any further questions, comments, clarifications at all? All right, so we have to first vote on the amendment that Dan presented. Uh, so if you are in favor of changing the composition a little bit of the housing committee, you would say aye, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed name?
No.
Uh, let's do roll call, I think I know what it is, but we'll do roll call just to be cer- sure.
Alder Barr?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Clouter?
Aye.
Alder Crowsey?
No.
Alder Rice?
Aye.
Alder Schroder?
Aye.
Alder Scott?
No.
All right, so that passed. So now we're to the now amended original motion, which is, has changed a little bit of the composition. Um, any further comments at all on this discussion? All right, seeing none, um, I guess we'll just roll call to be safe, sorry.
No worries.
Alder Barr?
Yes.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Clouter?
Aye.
Alder Crowsey?
Aye.
Alder Rice?
Aye.
Alder Schroder?
Aye.
Alder Scott?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, then that passes. Any other updates from SEDA? I don't think anyone else here was there unless you have anything, Pat, or.
We have lights here, if, nope.
Good, all right, all right, Ag and Roll Affairs?
No report.
All right, EMS?
Um, had a great meeting, things are on track. Nothing else, uh, we had a number of new people get sworn in, nothing else to report.
All right, Bicycle Committee, I think that's Julia, actually, uh, Tree Advisory Committee?
It's going to be meeting the same day as Commission on Aging, except at four o'clock in the afternoon, it's at eight thirty in the morning, so I'll be in the building twice that day.
All right, uh, Landmarks Preservation, I think that Shannon, I'm pretty sure you haven't met, so nothing to report. All right, Finance Committee?
The approval, uh, number one's approval of bills, these are, um, check number is eleven ninety-four sixty-six through eleven ninety-five thirty-three. Their date is eight one nineteen through eight fifteen nineteen, total is three hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty-one cents. Any questions? If not, uh, the next one is resolution, it's ordinance amendment, it's resolution R one forty-eight dash nineteen, extending the, um, external audit contract for twenty nineteen and through twenty twenty financial audit. I need a motion there, right?
For the resolution, you do need to make a motion, yeah. You, you moved to approve.
To approve.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, and do you, or maybe Misty, want to speak to what this is?
In due time, no, Misty can.
Okay.
Misty, say a few words.
So, three audit years ago, we did an RFP, Baker Tilly at the time, who has been our long-term auditors, was the lowest price, uh, so we went with them. It was a three-year term with an optional two-year extension. We've been very happy with the service they've provided. They've, uh, offered a three percent increase over the next two years, which we felt was reasonable, um, so that's what we're bringing forward. The intention would be after this two-year extension, we'll do a full RFP again.
All right, questions for Misty at all? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed name? All right, that passes. Uh, anything else on Finance?
Nothing.
All right, Personnel, anything? I know Julia chairs, she's not here, anything else?
Chair.
Yeah, Anne, give something?
Um, yeah, it's, uh, I move to approve the operator license for Marcellus Moulton.
All right, is there a second for that, we jumped on Public Safety?
I'll second.
All right, second by Sarah, uh, would you like to speak to this at all, Anne?
Uh, he came in and met with us, and he brought his supervisor. It seemed like he's doing a really nice job, he's back in school, and, um, he's married, expecting a baby, and he seems to be doing really well, so we approved him.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed name? All right, uh, before I go to Mayor's Report, I would like to entertain an amendment to the agenda to move up F three, I know we've got a bunch of people here from Pelletary, and I'd like to get them on their way if we could, and not let, make them sit here any longer. I'm sure they would appreciate that, so if someone would like to move F three into the next item, that would be wonderful.
I'd move to move ma- move F three up to be the, instead of number nine.
All right.
My second.
Second by Janelle, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed name? All right, so who is making the resolution for this one, Public Works? You want to do this?
Yeah. Okay, um, we're gonna do a motion to, uh, ta- is, we're tabling, we're tabling.
Postpone.
Postpone till fe- uh, October twelfth, October twelfth, a resolution approving an agreement with Pelletary for the two thousand twenty twenty-four solid waste and recycling contract.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
And the reason why we want to postpone is we want to hear from RCC, and we want answers on various components of this contract, but generally, we're pretty good with the contract.
All right, did Public, what did Public Works do?
We approved.
All right, and RCC?
So RCC did review this, and we did approve, um, we made some amendments to the, um, contract, so we did have feedback, but I don't know if that's what you're referring to, Dan, or did you not, was that feedback not shared as to how?
We wanted more info.
Okay, um, could we answer that now, or do, or what, or?
Wait, what is this? We, we, you wanted it to October twelfth.
What happened is we had a good discussion and Finance about this, and basically, we just wanted more answers from RCC. I'll give you one example, um, we're no- we're neighbors notified on the changes, and they weren't, not, um, they're just, we had a good discussion, and we weren't comfortable with some of these cha- well, I'll give you another one, uh, solid waste, uh, no, brush.
Brush, it's a big thing.
Brush, uh, two, um, they're gonna subtract two times, and I get it, it's due to cost, but I think it's real important to the citizens not to do that. Um, I know in my neighborhood, they really rely on those brush pickups, and so I don't want to get any more discussion here, but we just wanted to, our discussion was to bring it back to RCC, and, uh, staff will tell you what we discussed, and it was all good, just bring it back to us the next meeting.
And, and I can attend that meeting with, uh, Claudia to sort of, uh, communicate the concerns of the Finance Committee.
Okay, Dorothy?
I'm going to apologize to the Pelletary people for making them sit here for three hours. This could have been brought forward in the agenda if we had a sense that it was going to be postponed, and they wouldn't have had to sit here for three hours.
My, that was my fault, sorry about that, Dorothy.
Further comments at all? Seeing none. We'll try a voice vote first. All in favor of postponing?
To the twenty-second. For the record, it's the twenty-second we discussed, because the RCC meets the twenty-first.
All right.
Take notes.
All right, so all in favor of postponing until the twenty-second?
Dan, sorry, I'm sorry, Aaron. But you said the twenty-second of October, or September?
October twenty-second.
October twenty-second? That's not our next RCC meeting.
I think we were assuming that you would be before that.
October twenty-first is our next RCC. Okay.
So there's next council meetings at the twenty-second.
Oh, I apologize, I apologize, okay.
I was going off Captain Clouter over there, and so...
Nope, sorry, thank you.
All right, so I think we're, got that cleared up. So all in favor of postponing until October twenty-second, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
I hear one nay there, so that passes to postpone.
Sorry, guys.
All right, sorry for delay. All right, going back up to Mayor's Report. Couple things. I think everyone's gonna be here at the next meeting, and we do need to take a new group photo. Now we have a new member of council, and so if you could... Sure, we can, yeah, I didn't think it was gonna take that long, but okay. Why don't we just do ten quick before we do the reports then? And update, and talk about the public engagement survey and strategy quick, so, so I want you to come up and tell us more about the public engagement.
So, Pat, could you please hit the tab?
And Wade.
So Wade's gonna lead the show on this.
So just very briefly, wanted to update the council on our engagement process for the comp plan update. So want to talk about two pieces, or two ideas, our principles and our pieces. We'll just focus on that in the next few slides. So principles, I think we all know we're under a short timeline. Given that short timeline, we really want to be efficient, comprehensive, and inclusive as we develop that engagement framework. So as we talk about these pieces, staff really made an attempt to address those three, those three principles. So in terms of the specific pieces, essentially five components, public survey, which we'll talk more about, neighborhood district, neighborhood slash district public meetings, we'll talk more about that as well. Some city committee meetings, we'll talk more about that, and then that'll culminate probably towards the end of the year in a citywide public meeting. So talking more specifically about each one of these pieces, and this information is all in your packet, copies of the survey, all those sorts of things. But basically, we want to do a couple of different formats of that survey, both electronic and hard copy. Obviously, given our population, we want to make sure it's in English and Spanish. In terms of design and content, we think succinct but effective. We want to make sure we're very thorough, but also succinct in our, in our surveying. Two components to the survey, kind of a general survey component, and then more of a development, visual preference element, where people can look at images and tell us what kind of development they prefer. In terms of distribution, I think we're envisioning a lot of different avenues. Postcard mailers, newspaper, TV, public meetings, some boots on the ground, getting some staff out there to knock on doors, neighborhood associations, social media, and also city committee, city committee meetings as well. Just back one, yeah, in terms of timeline, opening and closing roughly a month. I think we're envisioning mid-September to mid-October. And then obviously, we'll, we'll look at all that information and analyze it and get it into that comp plan draft come, come November and December. So moving on to this idea of neighborhood and district public meetings, so five meetings we're proposing throughout the city. And you'll see a map up there, you could probably see it better in your packet, but staff did put a lot of thought into breaking up these meetings into specific zones. And we did that based on not only all their districts, but also the unique demographics of our city, and the issues of interest to those, those unique areas. So essentially, what you see there is, is five meeting zones, and I'll just quickly walk through those zones. So District One is essentially one meeting zone. District Two and District Three, in the southern part of District Three, were combined into a second meeting zone, again, based on the similar demographic. Now District Three, in the northern tier, that's a separate meeting zone, kind of the north Fish hatchery road area. And then District Four also has two zones, kind of an urban suburban zone that you see in blue, and then a rural zone that you see in, in kind of the brownish or orange. So that's what staff is proposing. Meetings will be co-led by us, as well as by neighborhood partners, some nonprofit groups, as well as some planning consultants. We think that'll make for a really effective meeting. Format and content to be determined as we flesh out these meetings over the next month or so. And I think probably most importantly, we certainly want to confirm these dates and locations with you all before we set them. So assuming folks are okay with this general framework, we'll be sending out emails this week to kind of confirm desired meeting dates and locations with you all. So moving on to the third piece, City Committee Meetings, this is basically an offer by our Planning Department to meet with all our city committees and relevant staff to kind of give them an update on the comp plan, gather their feedback. So we have started that process already, and those meetings will be held in September through December. And then the culmination of all this stuff will be a citywide public meeting that has yet to be scheduled, but most likely sometime in November. We'll present a draft at that, at that meeting. We'll kind of have an open house format where people can come in and just kind of give us basic feedback. And again, that'll kind of be the culmination of these, of these four pieces. So with that, a quick and dirty of public engagement, but can certainly answer any questions or comments the council might have.
I know there's a lot of concern out there about getting public feedback, but I think you'd see that there's gonna be especially factor in some of the different committees and council meetings. There's, you know, fifteen, twenty meetings, opportunities for people to give feedback. I know that anyone is welcome to any of the neighborhood meetings, even if you don't live in that neighborhood, you can, you can go to all five if you want. But, you know, just because it's focused on one area, you can go to whichever one you want. Other comments at all, questions? Dorothy?
Probably ask what all venues you anticipate advertising in to try to promote these meetings?
Yeah, I think we had that one slide up there, but I envision TV, newspaper, city website, social media, neighbor associations. Certainly open any thoughts that you might have. You know, we're partnering with some nonprofit groups, so I think they'll help us get the word out.
Nextdoor.com.
Okay, sure.
Any of our individual Facebook pages and things like that?
Other questions, comments at all?
As far as next steps, just for public information, stay tuned for the September seventeenth Plan Commission meeting. I'm sure we'll have something scheduled on the agenda there. It could include more detail about exactly how we think these meetings will go, as well as September twenty-fifth committee of the whole. And then again, mid-September, look for that advertising for the public survey and postcard mailer availability.
Great. Anything further? I don't think we need to do any motion or anything like that, or we just want to make sure that everyone knows what we're doing and what, how, what we're, how we're trying to reach out as much as possible and get a lot of input and feedback from the community on this. So if there's nothing else, we can let these guys go home and get some sleep. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thanks.
All right. Mayor's Report, just two things. One, I was mentioning that we gotta redo our group photo. We'll send a email just as a reminder, but thinking next meeting, if you can dress nice, and we'll redo our group photo, that'd be great. We'll send a reminder on that. And then the other thing I just wanted to do is mention, you maybe heard about this, but just offer my condolences to the both really Fire Department and EMS, there's a young man, Grant Langer. He interned, worked there for a while. He was down in Memphis. He moved out to Memphis, and he passed away. His dad is Lance Langer, who's been around for a long time. He was active with our Fire Department for a long time. His dad, Bob, was also very active in the community, and I know that it's, you know, just a pretty sad situation, and just our, you know, condolences to our people and his family as well, so. We can do quick, all the reports, let's start with Sarah, you have anything?
No report.
Sarah, Shannon, do you have anything? No, all right, Tom, do you have anything?
Nothing.
All right, Janelle, do you have any reports?
Nope.
All right, Dorothy, do you have any reports?
I'll pass.
All right, Anne?
Oh, I'd just like to mention that we lost our QuickTrip store this week.
I heard that the Neighborhood Night Out thing at Jamestown was also very well attended.
Yes, it was. It was excellent.
Great.
No report.
All right, and, all right, that's everyone. All right, so next, we are down to news, new business, closed session. I need someone to read this word for word, please.
Mayor, before we, before we do that, we're probably gonna run that past eleven o'clock.
It's possible, yeah.
We want to vote to extend the meeting.
Sure, let's do that quick.
So moved.
Until what time?
An hour, for now, anyway.
To eight, eleven-thirty?
No, from eleven to twelve, I would say. Hopefully, we don't need it, but hey, it's not my fault. But hopefully, it doesn't go to midnight, but I'll say from, until twelve o'clock for now, and hopefully, we don't need it. So, Dan, did you move?
I did.
All right, is there a second? Same by Dorothy. All in favor, can say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
All right, sorry, Tom. You lose. All right, who would like to read the closed session piece here? Any volunteers? Sarah, go for it.
I make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eighty-five, one G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or are likely to become involved. Lawsuits for David and Cheryl Strassman and Lucinia Del Re, Del La Rosa Vides. I'm sorry, I butchered the name.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Anne, I heard first. All right, all in favor of going into closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, then we are in closed session. All right, so we're back in open session. First up is discussion of possible action lawsuit for David and Cheryl Strassman. I just wanted to note for the public that during this piece of the closed session, that Alder Strassman did recuse herself and leave the room. Just wanted to let the public know that piece. There is no additional discussion or possible action. Also, no additional discussion and possible action on lawsuit for Luciana De La Rosa Vides. So now, we are on E. Dan, would you like to make a motion on this?
Sorry there, Mr. Mayor, I'd love to. Motion to approve ordinance two thousand nineteen zero twenty-eight, repealing and recreating the Bicycle Committee ordinances as a citizen committee?
Is there a second? Second by Anne. Valerie, do you want to speak to this quick?
Yes, just very briefly, last year, the common council created a bicycle committee. I know there was some back and forth on the original language in creating it versus what was ultimately adopted. Regardless of what's in the ordinance, there was a numbering, ordinance numbering error in the ordinance that's drafted in MUNICODE, which is the organization we work with in publishing and keeping our code, ended up putting it in a different section than where it was intended. And essentially, it ended up in the special ad hoc and other committees, rather than its intention, which was a citizen committee. And so this particular ordinance, all we're doing is we're just repealing and recreating it exactly as it was approved previously last year. It's just fixing the numbering error, and it's turning it into a regular citizen committee, which I believe was the intention all along. This wasn't meant to be a temporary ad hoc committee, it was supposed to be a permanent committee. So, just housekeeping.
All right, any questions at all? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. Next up is Director Furles. It looks like maybe someone on Finance Committee wants to do this first one.
Motion to approve Resolution R-92-19, agreement with Prairie Land Services for appraisal and negotiation services for McKee Road Reconstruction Project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Did Finance approve?
We did.
Yep, okay, and who wants to, let us know what this is?
I can do that. This is basically the land acquisition contract, so Prairie Land Services will actually negotiate the land acquisition needed for the McKee Road reconstruction between Commerce and Seminole.
All right, very big project, important project, it's going on next year. Questions at all, comments? Dorothy?
Is there a sense of how much in acres or something that we're going to be looking to acquire?
No, that, all those would be appraised by Prairie Land, so those adjacent parcels will be appraised. There's not a whole land, a lot of land out there that needs to be acquired, with the exception of some of the land in close proximity to Seminole where we are increasing, where we're redoing the configuration of that roadway a little bit. So that'll be where the most land's acquired.
Around the bike bridge, I would imagine, as well.
The bike bridge is actually part of this. There is no additional right-of-way needed. That's a hundred-foot right-of-way from the railroad.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Any other questions at all? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, number two, either Public Works or Finance, someone want to do this one?
Want to make a motion to...
Yep, go ahead.
Motion to approve Resolution R-151-19, authorizing rejection of bids for the two thousand nineteen Fish Hatchery Road Reconstruction Project.
Is there a second?
Second.
And what did Public Works do?
We approved.
Approved the rejection, yep, and Finance?
Approved.
For the rejection. I don't know if Pat or someone else wants to speak to what happened here.
Yeah, basically, we went out for bid on the project, came in at thirty-one percent over budget, and five, approximately five million dollars for the people in the public to know. We believe, our consultant believes, by tweaking the, the bid documents, possibly extending the timeline of construction slightly, and amending some ordinance requirements we have on materials, we'll be able to bring that number in line. No guarantees, but it doesn't hurt to try.
Five dollars more is pretty, pretty high, so if we can even cut it in half, that'll be pretty significant.
Yeah, and just for your information, whatever the increase is, we will be going back to the county and requesting additional funds.
Dorothy, do you have a question?
Yeah, what, how, how would the basic timeline be affected? What kind of work would be delayed or whatever?
It would basically delay everything that was gonna occur this fall, and that was some utility work within the right-of-ways on either side. We weren't gonna touch anything inside the curb this year. So what that will do is it'll require some more coordination among contractors that are doing the utility work and road work, whereas before, they would have been out of each other's way. So we still are hoping for somewhat of a similar timeline to be done spring, summer of two thousand twenty-one, but there's a lot of variables coming into play right now.
Verona Road contractors know that dance really well.
Any other questions at all, comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, then that passes to reject, which is a little bit weird. We did number three already, so number four, Finance Committee, someone want to do that one?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-153-19, approving the amended and restated collateral agreement of agreement for subdivision improvements in the plant of Terre Vessa.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Anne, what did Finance do?
Approved.
All right, and what's this about?
This is refinancing of, of the agreement. There's no fiscal impact on the city, so...
Yeah, I can speak to this one. So Terre Vessa has financing through McCarland State Bank. When they financed their project originally, the bank required them to have the city consent to collateral assignment, which is standard in these kinds of developments. It basically just says that if the developer goes under, the bank, that's the financer, finance here of the development, can come in and either finish out the development or sell it, the project, to another developer to finish it. So the city previously entered into a collateral assignment agreement, or we signed off on such an agreement. Because they're refinancing, they need a new agreement that just updates our consent to, once again, that if Terre Vessa developer for some reason went under, the bank would be able to come in, and the obligation on the city is really just the same. We just have to let the bank know if there's a default, so there's no, basic housekeeping, essentially.
Questions, comments at all, thoughts? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, that is approved as well. Next committee, the whole meeting is tomorrow, and we're gonna be talking about budget stuff. Misty will be here tomorrow. The next council meeting is September tenth. Any other announcements, or motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Again by Janelle, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? So we didn't even need to extend the time, see?